Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Action Planning Board Meeting of September 8th, 2022. We have a slightly altered agenda this evening from what is published. Several public hearings that are going to be continued this evening. So I can announce those now. One is 225 Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. Also continued is 501 Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review, as well as 300 Elliott Street Plan Review Modification. So if we look like we get more people on that might have been coming from those public reviews, we'll we'll make that announcement again. But that allows us to spend a little bit more time on the other items remaining on our agenda, including the discussion of proposed changes to the demolition delay bylaw and the 100 Chestnut Street Site Plan Review, as well as some other items we have on the agenda. Before we go forward with that, however, I want to turn things over to Kate. Kate, do you have a clerk's report for this meeting?
Yes, I do. It's very brief. Since the last clerk's report at the August 25 meeting, we received four written correspondence up until 9/6. And two of those were specific, which responded to by the planning department. Two of those were general, which responded to by the clerk on behalf of the board. And none of those were about anything on the agendas.
Okay, great. Thank you. So then the next the next I'm getting an echo now. Is anyone else hearing that?
No, I'm hearing the same thing.
Okay. Maybe it stopped. The next item on the agenda then is a discussion, a discussion of proposed changes to the demolition delay bylaw. This is a bylaw change that was proposed in Springtown Meeting. Peter, do you have any background on this you want to add, or should we? Before I, before I turn it over to Ms. Nicole?
My, how you doing, Peter? Magic Town Planner. Just thank you, Tricia. I would say, you know, just I really have no, no, nothing to add, except that there was a bylaw, which Mr. Paul can speak to, that was proposed by a ten citizen petition last, last spring at the town meeting. And that it was discussed on the floor of town meeting. And I think it was, it was withdrawn, if I'm not mistaken. And it was reported down. And I think it was asked that, you know, the, the, the bylaw be kind of go on there a little bit more review and then obviously come back in the, at the next upcoming town meeting. Obviously, the next upcoming town meeting is upon us. It will be really soon. However, this demo delay, I just want to let everyone know, to remind everybody, is that it is not a zoning bylaw. This is an amendment to the general bylaw. The planning board will not be making, you know, having to have a public hearing on this bylaw per se. So it's a little bit different from the zoning bylaw, but I just wanted to make that clarification before we get too far down the line. So with that said, I think it's appropriate to introduce Ms. Nicole. And she can walk through what she is proposing. And, and, and Ms. Nicole, please let me know, do you want me to share the screen? Or would you like to share the screen with your proposal? Just please let me know how I can help.
I hadn't really thought of that, so I, I, I'm not going to do that for now. I, I, I have to say, um, so it's kind of a work in progress. What I had sent you originally, I, having meetings two nights in a row, we did the select board last night, and we're doing the planning board tonight. This is really, so let me just explain what this is first. So we did go to town meeting in the spring to try to pass a citizens petition warrant, but eventually the historical commission did sponsor the warrant. Both were on, they were both basically the same. There were a lot of people that expressed concerns and so it, it was not passed at town meeting in the spring. So I put together a working group from my Save the Mill Buildings Citizens Historical Preservation Group. And it was specifically to do a number of things, including working on the language for another warrant article, which we are hoping to have the historical commission sponsor in the fall. But I wanted to work with the other town boards, because a lot of the, a lot of the concerns that we heard in the spring came from town boards. And I wanted to see what people's opinions were of the, of the new language that we did come up with. So we, we did scale it back a bit. We were really hoping to have something that still added a little bit of teeth to the, what's currently the bylaw, but also something that would not, not have as many concerns. So last night at the select board meeting, I actually was pretty pleased with the support we got for it, but there was a couple of little difficulties. One was one section where I forgot to write something in, so I had to go back in and change that. And it's, it's really, it's not a change as much as just I had to kind of do a scratch out and write it in another section where it was already changed in one section. And the other thing would be, which is a revision since last night, because they did ask us or asked me at that meeting to further clarify something regarding the and I'll, and I'll read it to you. Regarding the, it's actually in section 125. I sent it to you. I don't know. I sent it literally about five minutes ago, so you may not have it. Section 125 to procedure. And it's under number eight and, and section B under number eight. And I'm going to go ahead and read the changes, which I don't have, because I have, let me get them on my phone. I have them in my computer and you're on my computer, so I'm just going to bring them up in my phone.
Ms. Nicole, I would actually make, make a suggestion that instead of jumping ahead, maybe we should start at the beginning of the document and you can explain the changes in order so that we have them clear and we're not jumping back and forth.
Yeah, I just wanted you to be aware that this change exists. So I was going to go through. So there are these other changes. Basically, there was five changes originally from what we had. And there are changes now from what we had originally. I'm sorry, I said that backwards. And then this new revision to that same section last night. So sure, go ahead. I, I, I basically really want to hear what everyone's feedback is on the, the proposed changes that we have now.
Can everyone see my screen? And, and, and Ms. Nicole, please know that this is the version you first sent me. I tried to look at my email, but
Yeah.
So this is the version we have, which is the not the up to date version from would the board prefer to look at the new version if we can?
I did just email it. Somebody should have it. I emailed it to the board and I emailed it to Peter.
Wait, give me a second. I'm sorry. Let me update my email.
I don't have anything new yet.
I don't have anything new myself either.
Okay, I can read it to you when we get to that part.
Okay.
I have it.
Okay. Excuse me, I'm just going to share the screen that I was using. Okay. Here it is.
So you can just make us aware of new changes as we go?
Sure.
Okay.
So do you want me to go through, to go through each change? So what we're looking at now, 120, section 125 dash two procedure. The first change is so originally, so, so what the, the bylaw says now is before January 1st, 1940. Originally at Springtown Meeting, that warrant, we were trying to change it to what I would call the 50 year rule. It's a self updating rule that says anything built 50 years prior would be considered, you know, to, to fall under this bylaw. So a lot of people were concerned about that because of the fact that you know, they, they were worried about capes and ranches that might be, you know, 50 years old, that aren't really considered historic, having to go before, which really wouldn't be so much the case, because it's really only going to be places that they want to completely demolish. It wouldn't be just for like a rehab or an add-on or, or a re redo. It would be more for a, a complete tear down. And then they would basically just get, they would, they wouldn't be covered under this. The, the historic commission wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't call that a historic home. So there were concerns. So we decided, we went through a process and we came up with ideas and we kind of debated them back and forth. And we decided that the, our main priority for this was that we, we still wanted it to remain something that would be continuously updated. So we added on 20 years, 70, 50 year rule. So now it's anything 70 year, years prior. But the, the, the rule itself will still continue to update itself. And we thought that was a good way to go forward. It still adds a little bit more teeth than what's in there right now. And it also self updates, which we thought was just, was a much better option than just having a, you know, a stationary date.
So Helen, just to clarify, when you say self updates, you mean it's always 70 year prior to whatever the date is?
Exactly.
Okay.
Now, is that 70 years on January, on, on January 1st? Or is it 70 years of the day?
I think it would probably, it's 70 years prior. That's a good question. I hadn't actually considered that. So my feeling would be, would be 70 years prior to the date of the application for the demolition delay.
I think you should clarify that right in there.
Okay. This, these are the things we're trying, that's why there's revisions from last night, which I had to go and kind of give to my working group and get some feedback from them and then try to send it out. And so it's a bit of a process, but I did manage to get it done in one day. So, okay, so 70 years or maybe from the date of the application?
Well, yeah. You could add, you could add a paragraph right above that says all references to 70 years prior mean 70 years prior to application date.
Yeah, I can do a, like I did in the, the one I'll show you later. I put in for further clarity. So I can just put that, I'll, I'll put it in there, you know, as, you know, as a clarifying statement.
From my point of view, it, it, it would help to be kind of flushed out a little bit, because in the instance where you do, as a talent staff, you do go in and you're looking at old files, right? You know, if there's a house, you don't know if that house is built in August of 1930, or is it built in, is it built in? Excuse me, is it built in March of 1930, or is it built in August of 1930? Right? That's a six month gap, right? So all you do know is it's 1930, right? And especially when you look at old assessors records, it's only going to state the year typically. And very rarely for old applications, historical applications, you're not going to get actually an exact date. And so just to clarify, if you're going to roll it up to a calendar year, just that would make life a little bit simpler, I would say.
So, so instead of saying, instead of saying from the date of application, 70 years prior to the year, the year built, as opposed to calendar year built?
Yeah.
I think you still need 70 years prior to the application. I think that still needs to be there. That's your, that's where you start counting, right?
So kind of add in both.
Yeah. And then I think you need to clarify that okay, to calculate the year.
So back to the beginning of the calendar year. So it doesn't mean after March or August, you can take it back to January, anything January 1 or after.
Maybe the way to frame it is building construction is based on a calendar year rather than month or something like that.
Okay.
I think that makes sense.
I also just think you might want to years, put 70 years or more versus just having the 70 years.
70 years or more would be confusing to me, I think. I don't know. What, what, what do you, what do you mean by 70 years or more?
Or having been built, what it would be at at minimum 70.
70 plus?
Yeah, yeah, versus it, 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 it's an obvious point maybe, but 70 years prior makes it seem like just buildings built 70 years prior versus anything built before that as well. I think it's a minor that you can, you can think about and that we don't have to come up with exact wording here, but I keep thinking that some things. So on the text you've, you've eliminated, it says built before January 1st, 1940. But, um, but the 70 years prior, it doesn't say at minimum or
So before seven, would be four 70 years prior, cover that or no?
I'm not sure. I, I think it's just, it's just kind of looking at it.
I, I can play with the wording and see if I can. All right, I, I have
I'm not, I don't think it's a big point. It's just something that stood out to me that's something
Just to, just to further clarify.
Yeah.
I think 70 years or more is not going to confuse, because it's not like you're saying, I, I think the all, the or will make it clear.
Okay.
And I wonder, Peter, maybe you could help us out here, but it looks like the usual timeframe is either 50 or 75. 70 feels a little out of the blue number. I'm not sure where that 70 came from, but it seems like when you just look at other kind of laws, it says 50 or 75. That's the framework Massachusetts basically chooses for demolition delay bylaws.
I, I can go back and see what I can find as far as that's I, I'm not sure how many I've seen, because I wasn't specifically looking for 75. I know I've seen some 50s. Like I can go back and compare it. But how do you feel about the 70 years in general, other than just, you know, I mean, I think the major concern at Springtown Meeting was, was the fear that houses that weren't really historic. And of course, historic, the bylaw actually covers historic and architectural significance. So it really covers more than just historical significance. And sometimes a historical, uh, or an architecturally significant building, but being younger than that. But, you know, for, um, you know, for comfort sake, we were trying to kind of make, we sort of settle, I think that I, that it got settled on as a, as something we just kind of picked out of a number of different options that we were thinking about. So I'm, I'm, I'm wondering in respect to the way, the, the fear or the concerns that they had in the spring, how do you feel the 70 years prior? Would work?
I think, to me, it is better than having an exact date, you know, like the 1940 date, because time goes on. So it's, it's, it sits fine with me. I see what Deepa is saying, though, that it seems the 70 versus 25, 50, 75, 100, it, it does seem like it's a little random. I don't know what any other
It probably was. I mean, it was, it's just the number that we picked out of the, the range of numbers we were, we were thinking about. So that was, yeah, how we arrived at. The other thing, though, is that historical significance, actually, the date, the actual, the, uh, date is 50 years. For, for any building to be considered historically significant by the, um, the State Mass Historical Society or the Commission is 50 years.
I think part of, at least what I heard at Spring meeting was, you know, who then decides if my house built in 1950 is historically significant enough to not be able to, you know, put a dormer on or something like that.
And that's why
is that process? So I don't know if you added that in somewhere else that
No, this changed completely from that. This is strictly for demolition. This doesn't cover, you know, other smaller work that would be done to, to, to the house. This is for demolition permit only.
Yeah, but the same distinction applies, though. I think what Kevin is saying, what, what if he wants to demolish his house? And, and I think that, that, the, the vagary of the languages, I still, I, I don't see a lot of difference in terms of, you know, big picture, looking at what the intent is. I'm not getting into the wording, this word, that word, or this number, that number. I think that the, the, the concept of having a, a, a broad authority for a board to decide whether Kevin's house is significant is, it to me, is, is, is kind of a lazy approach to, 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 to set up a standard. I, I think it's, and, and it's dangerous, because it, it becomes very very unpredictable. And, and, and the houses, especially in a town where, with, with a, with an industrial, you know, ancestry like ours, just a blanket rule for houses. And, and I know, Ms. Nicole, you said that, that, yeah, but that, they're not going to go after houses. Well, we say that now, but if it's not in the wording, I would not trust that that's going to be the case, because we don't know who's going to make that decision.
But it does say in the wording that it's for a demolition permit.
Of, of any building. And now houses are building too.
Yes. It does cover historical structures.
Well, but, but then we're going into a circle, who, what is, what's historic, which is what Kevin asked. So that's what I see. There's, there's a loophole here that I'm, I'm uncomfortable with. Because the, 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 the more proactive approach, in my view, and that's what I, I personally objected to what happened in the spring. Because I think if the historical commission would, would, would really try to, 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 to exercise the, a, a, a careful study and delineate historical areas or historical structures, then you can have teeth on that, because it's set. But this blanket rule of the entire town of historical structures with no defining who makes the decision, I, I, I still not comfortable with.
And how I think, what I'm to adding to Marcelo, I think I've, I've seen in certain towns, they're categorized. So one is maybe it's the age of the building, one is the category of the building, and maybe the other one is a list, if it's listed in historic commission records. So I think if we clarify that, instead of having, like, for me, when I read one and two, I had to go back, read it multiple times to understand what we are trying to say there. So maybe cat categorizing the categories that this law is applicable for right at the start. We are saying it's the age, it's probably the category, maybe that'll help refine the same thing. And maybe that will help Marcelo's concern as well, because I think that will be easy for anybody who's reading it to know what exactly they were looking for.
But, but, but then would be, Deepa would, would be a matter of setting that list and that standard and everybody to see and everybody to know, even when they purchase a property, okay, that property isn't listing and it's important, because this, this and that. So it is not, it's, it's not out of thin air. There's a basis for it. And that, that's the lack of basis is what, what bothers me.
Yeah. And, and having people to guess and interpret it their own way as things go along, may not be the way to kind of frame this paper.
Yeah, there already actually is a section in the demolition delay bylaw. And it's actually under one, uh, section 125 dash nine definitions, which does actually define what is considered a historic building or structure. And it says here has been, okay, so the building must either or is importantly associated with one or more, now, I, this is not something I wrote, this is what's already in the bylaw now. Just, just so you know, this isn't something we're trying to change. This is the existing bylaw. Is importantly associated with one or more historic persons or events, or with broad architectural, cultural, political, economic, or social history of the town or the Commonwealth, or is historically or architecturally significant in terms of period, style, method of building, construction, or association with a recognized architect or builder, either by itself or in the context of a group of buildings.
And those criteria make a lot of sense, but then we just have to say yeah, but what is not there, what, what I'm referring to is not what the criteria are. But, 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 but to establish which buildings apply are applicable under this criteria.
So the problem with that is I like that idea, but things change, right? Because like, we could have someone in Ashland now, that's, that's a high school student, right, that becomes president. And then we might think that that house is historically significant, or we might not. So
Exactly. We might, we might or might not, but you cannot rule a blanket, a blanket regulation based on may or may not. It, it seems there's no, there's no reality behind it.
I think though, maybe, and, and I, I think we maybe should go through all the changes and then discuss a bit as a whole. But I think it's also important to remember that this really about just a demolition delay. And not about then in the end, you're not going to, Kevin can't demolish his house anyway, if he, if he so chooses, right? So it, it might be good to kind of get a, a more complete sense of the changes that are being proposed and how, how much they actually differ from what's already here. And if the larger discussion, I think we're starting to have, is beyond the scope of what's being proposed. Because I do think it becomes controversial. I mean, it, it seems like these things are clearly laid out in as a description here, but yet people are going to completely disagree when it comes to parts of 10 to 60 main, right? That's all, no matter how clearly these are written, there's still going to be disagreements about what's significant and what's not from different people's point of view. So I think that's just a given. So anyway, I, I would propose that we kind of go through all the changes and then so that we understand what the, the significance of the changes that are being proposed and then go back to a larger, a larger discussion if, if everyone's okay with that.
Can I, I, I think that's a good plan. Can I just get a clarification from Helen?
Sure.
So is there currently an Ashland demolition delay bylaw? Yes or no? Like
No, there's been one for a very long time. We're trying to just make some changes to the current bylaw.
So this, right, so what we're looking at, like, the, the written language of what we're looking at, I think it would be really helpful for this exercise to be clear. What is current language and what is new language? Because when you say new language, I think what you're saying, Helen, is whatever bylaw you presented, you have changed, but it's not really
It's just the items in red, Anna. It's really just a very few things, except for, as Ms. Nicole said, that there's, there's some things that they came out of the select were last night, which are not a part of this document, which would also be good, you know?
Understood. So in other words, we already have this bylaw. We're just talking about adding red to our current version. So, so I think that's really important, because I feel like we're, we're having like this sort of philosophical discussion as to whether a demolition bylaw is a good idea in general. We already have one. We're talking about making the changes in red. So, um, so I just kind of wanted to clarify that and not lose track of what we're actually doing. We already have this on the books, period. It exists. It's there. Um, we can't really debate that unless we're trying to get rid of it entirely.
Yeah. And, and also, um, most, most cities and towns have, have one as well. And a lot of them, you know, not a lot, but there are, I can't give you a verified number, but there are a lot that are even actually more stricter than this, than ours. So so any, a little bit of teeth to it, kind of, just kind of makes our town a little bit more historic, historic preservation friendly. It's not, it's not to scare away buyers. It's not to, I own a house here. I don't want to scare away a potential buyer. You know, I'm not, I'm not out to reduce the value of anyone's home. I'm, I'm really just trying to take a look at saving some potentially historic structures that might otherwise not get looked at.
So what is the current status quo within the current bylaw, the way it is?
Yes.
When do you file a demolition permit? Is it when you are demolishing the entire building? Is that defined?
Well, it depends on, so if the, if the building already falls under the, the parameters for needing to get a designation of whether or not it's historically significant, then, then they have to file for a demolition delay application first. Then after that building is or isn't designated significant, they either get the demolition permit or they get a delay.
So what happens, Anna, is when someone submits, whether it's a house, whether it's a business, whatever, when they're submitting for what typically would be a building permit, those drawings also show that they want to demo this part of the building or the whole building.
That's, that's where I'm going with it. Does it apply to partial demolition or entire demolition? How is that defined? And the reason I'm asking is I'm, you know, I, I'm just looking around at other demolition bylaws, like the city of Cambridge requires it when pieces of it are being demolished.
Yeah. So I think, and I'm trying to find it right now, because I think, like, if you were adding on and not taking any part of the structure down, it wouldn't cover it. But I think for a historically significant building, it does cover in whole or in part. And I know it says it here somewhere. But right now, I don't know.
So to go to Marcelo's point, if my home is more than 70 So to go to Marcelo's point, if my home is more than seventy years old. And it's not yet designated historic, and there's some piece of it, any piece that I wanna remove. So I have to file this application.
Currently, if yeah currently, I think that was the cutoff, so currently if it was built. Um honor before January first nineteen forty, you would have to uh. So is that seventy years old, let me think about this now, my, that would be sixty seven, that would be eighty years. Eighty-two years.
So just at the at the end of the um at the end of the. Uh current bylaw, demolition delay bylaw, there are demo, there are definitions, so demolition shall mean. Any act of pulling down, destroying, removing, or raising a building. Or commencing work of total or substantial destruction with the intent of completing the same, so it sounds like a big piece. Demolition permit shall mean the permit issued by the Inspector of Buildings as required by the State Building Code for the demolition. Substantial demolition or removal of a building. So it it doesn't.
Yeah.
From what I can see, nothing says partial demolition, or I'm gonna take part of my roof off to add a dormer. It's kind of getting, it seems to be getting rid of the building in a substantial way. That's currently on, that's currently the bylaw, not Ms. Nicole's.
Understood, so that I think that gives me some comfort, that we're not, we're not bothering the poor. Private landowner who has a building where they wanna make some small mi- minor change and they have to deal with this. We're talking about substantial, which is the majority of the buildings being removed. And that's already on the books. So all you're trying to change Helen with this new thing is you're trying to change the year, that's all?
In that line, yes.
Why don't we go back through those changes, cuz there are like three in total, right? I mean, it repeats through with the the changes originally mentioned, I think are like. Three.
Well, act, well, actually, I just wanna expand on that, I'm sorry, it it changes the date, but it also, it also makes it self-updating. So instead of having a stationary date. It's always kind of self-update.
Understood, so what are the other ones, what are the other changes?
Okay, so that's the first change in the, it was in a number of lines within that section, so I I uh. I crossed it up and put in the new, so the next one comes, and this was one of the little technical difficulties the uh select board picked up on last night. So I had a rid, the the working group that I worked with, we had originally determined that it might be nice for us. To add on to um the number of days. That the Historic Commission has um to determine whether. A building is signor- uh historically significant or not, it was at twenty. So under section five, we had changed it to twenty-five, giving them five extra days. Um then I somehow managed to, I guess, skip over section four, which also had it. Within twenty-five working days after receipt of the application for dem- demolition permit of the commission shall make. A determination, so I hadn't changed it in section four, so I went back and changed that in section four, so there's that same change. Twenty-five days in section four and in section five. That's the next change. And it really basically just gives the Historic Commission five additional working days to either pull together some. Uh needed information or basically to have, because you know, I mean, twenty days and twenty-five is even, it's not a law. When you have a meeting, they meet once a month, so we thought giving them the additional five days, working the five uh, sorry uh. Working days was uh just going to be a little bit of a a help to them to to be able to get these done in time.
Given how hard it is to get the six of us together, I think that's understandable.
So that was that change, and then if you go to line seven under the same section, section two. The demolition delay timeframe right now stands, this is in the current bylaw, stands at nine months. In the spring, we tried to increase that uh to. Uh twelve months for anything. Under a hundred years or under into twenty-four months for anything uh over a hundred years old. Uh in in this, we're trying to change it strictly to twelve months period, no. Whether it's more or less than a hundred years old. Just adds a little bit more tooth uh to that.
So. So my my only question is that this is kind of, this is sort of black and white, right? It's, so right now, we have a black and white rule until nine months. Um now we're moving to a black and white rule of twelve months, I know some some towns do up to twelve months. Like the city of Cambridge has up to twelve months, so the Historical Commission has some leeway, right? So I I respect the fact that our current bylaw is black and white, nine months is what we do. I I just kind of wanna talk through that a little bit Helen, as to what you have in mind, why you prefer the black and white. Versus giving the Historic Com- Commission a little bit more leeway, like why not say up to twelve months, or say until nine. Until nine months or up or, you know, at least nine months and up to twelve, something like that to give them some leeway. What if they decide nine months is fine?
So, okay, so. And and I and I can only speak for myself, so as we decided this as as a as a working group, but. From my own perspective, from my own feeling going uh with this. I I I don't like the up to, and I'll tell you why, because right now it's at nine months. And as you know, I did complain about the fact that ten to sixty Main Street is actually in the permitting process. Uh at during the during the nine-month period, which personally I do think is a bit of a. We're we're ignoring the bylaw, actually having a bylaw that no one pays attention to doesn't make a lot of sense, whether it's twelve months or nine.
I I think we, I think we have to pause on that, that says that that no one is ignoring anything, these are the legal ramifications that we have here. So if it needs to be a change, it needs to be a legal change, but no one is ignoring the bylaws, we're actually following them, so let's be careful about that language.
Okay, but the up to nine, that my feeling was with the up to nine months is that. They could just say nine months, they could say twelve months, but they could say two months, and I really didn't wanna leave that option on the table. I, you know, I wouldn't want it less than nine months, which is where it is now, and since we were trying to add a little bit of strength to the bylaw, we went with twelve months. I feel like up to twelve months gives them the option to make it less strong, that wasn't our intention, that's why we went with twelve.
And I think just to add to what Nicole just, what you just said, I think Massachusetts, it's generally six months. I think Historical Commission encourages communities to go to twelve months. Um it's it's more coming from the Historical Commission encouraging communities to use a twelve-month versus. Six months, which is what the standard is from for Massachusetts, so this. I'm not sure whether nine months came in our bylaws, but it's either six months or twelve months, that's what's kind of encourage, so. Um the twelve months kind of really makes sense from that point of view.
I mean, I I'm I'm good with the twelve months, I I was just curious, because I could see it saying until nine months or. At least nine months or up to twelve, right, giving them a little bit of leeway to be stronger. They may decide certain applications require more time or less time, but I I I'm good with twelve.
Okay, so I changed that on that line, and then I went again and changed it in in line uh eight B. And then the next change um is in eight B and it's an add-on. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to go open up my phone again. And so this is going to be um. Basically, it's 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 for clarification purposes, and it was what the Select Board felt needed to be clarified, so. Um so section eight B is the commission has satisfied that for at least nine, and I have. Scratched out, I put in twelve months, the owner has made continuing bona fide and reasonable efforts. To locate a purchaser, to preserve, rehabilitate, or restore the building, and such efforts have been unsu- unsuccessful. And they they felt it would be uh something, that should be something that's clarified, that's how it stands right now, that is what is in the but bylaw right now. So I worked on this today, I kind of sent it out to my working group, I got some good feedback from them, but this is still in. This is still in the process, but I I did like what I wrote, but. It's it's not necessarily set in stone at this point, because legitimately, we just started working, I worked on this today. Um so I wrote, so and for further clarity. Uh continuing bona fide and reasonable efforts shall be to provide the Historic Commission with a list of efforts. The applicant intends to make to fulfill this requirement within thirty days of being issued a determination of twelve-month demolition delay. Uh due to preferentially preserved status, this list should satisfy five separate planned attempts and must satisfy no less than three se-. Three separate planned attempts to show the applicant is looking for someone to purchase, preserve, rehabilitate, or restore such building. The applicant will also be required to provide two updates to the Historic Commission showing the status of the reasonable efforts being filled. Prior to the end of the twelve-month demolition delay period. If you have questions, I can reread it.
Yeah, I mean, uh it's gonna be hard for us to kind of, I think you're just looking for general feedback.
Basically what I am looking for, yes.
So, I mean, for myself, I have no problem with the general um, the the. The the general direction you're going in here, you know, the twelve, the nine months to twelve months, the two to three years, the. Um the seventy days, um with the conversation we had earlier about seventy versus seventy-five or whatever. Um I think in in reading, in rereading the bylaw myself, I've found that it, whoever wrote the initial one. Um that there are some tricky things, and that was the one, that was one of the things that I stumbled on, it's like, what does this mean, like what? What does this mean, right, it was very unusual language, and so, and I think there are other things in the bylaw that. Um you know, to like look at it carefully, that aren't really making necessarily be- big changes at this time. But to try to make it a a a better bylaw, um an easier bylaw to understand. Um at this time, and I think that that was one of the areas that needed that kind of clarification. So um so I'm glad that uh this luck word kind of picked that out and said, you gotta, you gotta figure this out here, you know.
Yeah, so that's exactly what I tried to do today, like I said, I legitimately just started, I sat down today and came up with this. I I actually, I I actually, I don't like it myself. But you know, um I think that it's not unfair, I think it's specific, I think that it gives. It it gives timeframes and it gives um legitimacy to what they're already asking for. Uh just that they need to be able to come in and say, yes, this is what we're going to do, this is what we're doing, this is what has happened, so it sets up. Sort of a a, you know, a plan system for how they're gonna approach bringing it uh to the. To the Historic Commission and how they're going to go back and say, this is what's done and and know that they're really supposed to do something and what it is that they're supposed to do. It clarifies it a little bit, so I I that's basically what I'm hoping that you feel since this, like I said, I just did this today, so. I am looking for, and I'm glad, you know, Tricia, that what you said, um it 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 did need some clarification, so I just. I I am happy with what I came up with, and I'd like to hear what maybe some of the other people think of that too.
Anyone else from the board wanna jump in and?
I would make a suggestion, maybe like mass Historic Commission, just to see if. If they have a pulse of other um rules and. Um maybe just to copy, or maybe that's what got us into some of the discrepancies that people don't like we copy, but. Like I know to deepest point, I uh. Your Sudbury or Lexington just updated theirs to twelve months, so that is certainly not unreasonable. But just to um maybe try to get a template of what someone used that seemed like reasonable language on that.
Okay, did you say Maynard and Sudbury?
Um Sudbury, I believe, just updated theirs to twelve months. But I think that um the specifics we're looking for, I personally haven't seen a lot of in the ones I've read, so maybe check with them.
Okay.
An- anyone else, um wanna, I guess everyone's kind of jumped in a little bit.
Okay, then the last change um. That we had was in section one twenty-five five, this is under enforcement and remedy. And this is where uh someone who has violated the bylaw altogether and demolished a building without going for. Demolition delay or demolished it in violation of the demolition delay. Um there's a period after that of that they, of two years that they will not be issued. Um I guess they couldn't, yeah, I guess I'm I'm confused with it, I'm trying, so if they volunteer, obviously, they can't go for their building permits. Yeah, because I was gonna say, it doesn't make any sense that they'd be going for demolition permit, so they can't go for their their. Um it's been a lot of information over the last two days, sorry, um they can't go for their building permits for two years under the current bylaw. If they have taken down their building in violation of bylaw. So we just added in one more year, again, just simply to add in a little bit more tooth. And to make Ashland a little bit more ha- historic uh historically preservation friendly. Um and and that was our last change.
Comments, anyone?
I guess I I would only go back back to, I I think the the objective of everything that's being discussed is is good. I think the work that Mrs. Nicole and her group are doing is is important and is it's, you know, is to be commended. Uh it but 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 I I I have my doubts that if if this is gonna be presented as such, just as this. In the next town hall meeting, I'm not sure that people would feel any differently, because. You know, it it seems to me that is protecting uh or adjusting these, okay, makes sense. But it's the, it's it's kind of, it it seems like a backward process, if if the Historical Commission is gonna present this in a town meeting. As 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 the, this is the change they want, I'm not sure it's gonna go any differently, to be honest. Uh I I think if 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 the process was reversed, with the Historical Commission comes and says, okay, we have these planned to really uh laid out. Like in Ashland, for example, there may be. Uh districts that are more important than specific buildings, right? Uh like settlements uh around the mills, for example, and how that developed, this only addresses one building at a time. I if if that was addressed, okay, and we're gonna make these listings of districts and buildings that are significant, and then. The demolition delay makes sense to people, but I I think it's a part of the communication, what is the purpose of this? People just read this, like, okay, you you're changing this, but they don't understand, I think that's the way I feel, the the objective of of the whole purpose. And I don't I don't think changing a few things here and there is gonna make Ashland necessarily more historically friendly. I think what's gonna make it really historically or or uh more more friendly towards protecting historic. Features or structures is to have an approach to it that then is backed up by the demolition delay. I don't know if I'm being clear, maybe it's maybe not, I'm just thinking that this, this is the reverse of the process, and if that is presented that way to the public. It may be easier to understand the importance of it, cuz I think it's important.
Yeah, I think I'm a little confused, um I can tell you though that the Select Board actually kind of liked it. Um with the possible changes they asked for, but they they seemed so sort of supportive, so I don't know if that's um. The the general public or not, but I we did get some support there, I haven't been able to. Put this before the Historic Commission because they did uh not, they were not able to reach a forum last month. Um hopefully this month, uh there's two new members, myself included, they'll get to forum. Um so anyway, I I am a little bit confused because you said something about. I I because my feeling is almost like you don't really like the demolition delay by in the first place, which already exists. I I I'm I'm just kind of confused as to the whole.
Well, I I don't know why you have that feeling, I just say that I think it's important. And I say that I support the effort, I just think it's not gonna be successful as planned, that's all.
Okay.
Anyway, if I if I could comment on 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 that, I I think that one thing. That Marcelo said that really resonates with me is this idea of districts. So I I like, I like this, this proposal, I don't know if it will succeed or not, I like where we're going, I like the changes. But I do wonder about big picture. So we have a bylaw, right, I understand there's some desire to make certain pieces of it stronger, I hear it, I respect it, I think this is good. But we're not really thinking about planning long term, there could be districts, there could be pieces of town. That we decide are historic in nature, that require a certain kind of teeth or protection. We could, through comprehensive plan, define historic buildings more strongly as a community. There are things that we can do that would make this much more. Um as you put it Helen, you you're trying to make this stronger, you're trying to give it some teeth. Um, and, and that does resonate with me, and, and something about Marcela using the word districts, you know, clicks for me. And I know other communities, including the city of Cambridge, and I keep talking about them because I was curious how they've done it, and they've had a demolition bylaw since the seventies that they've amended more recently. Um, you know, there are communities that intentionally decide, there's certain buildings, there are certain areas that require this, and that's where the teeth go. So most, most demolition situations are gonna be substantial demolition of old buildings that we, as a community, may not necessarily be concerned about. The motivation here seems to be one particular building, right? Or one particular area of town that folks in town are very concerned about. So I wonder if we're missing something here, and we're not taking, taking a chance to be more intentional as a community.
I think that, I think the thing is, is just that this is, uh, as Mr. Cole is saying, it, it's kind of giving what we have, it's already on the books, it's giving it a little bit more teeth when people see, um, historic buildings that they're concerned about, and on the other hand, the, um, things like a sign that coming up with districts and those type of bylaws, such as they have in Newton, and I'm sure they have in many other communities around, this is a historic street, so you have to follow different rules.
Right.
Um, is a much longer, much more intensive process, um, that, that I think would be a good undertaking. But, um, but I think, I, I'm feeling from this group that they're, they're trying to make some kind of, um, difference more quickly. I, I do think that they should pursue things in a more academic way to about, about districts, things like that, but it's, that's a,
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's not done in six months.
Oh, no, 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 I think, I think where I'm going with this is, is I support this change, I like the teeth. I think if it doesn't succeed at town meeting, I would encourage Helen and others who are assisting her to investigate that, that more intentional route that might require more time and may actually be more successful, because I think the concern here might be, how does this impact, you know, the average homeowner? And adding more to the average homeowner may not be something the town approves. So, having a more of an, of a precise district approach may be long-term more successful if this does not pass. That's all I'm saying. I'm just kind of thinking, big picture, if the concern, again, by the entire community is that we're being too teeth-oriented to the average Joe versus a specific district, that's where I'm going with it.
Yeah, so I actually want to say I agree with Tricia, and I believe that the Historic Commission has in the past, uh, looked into making um, some parts of Ashland historic districts. Ashland currently has signs up that say you are entering a historic district, but those aren't real, um, historic districts, those are kind of made up. Nobody really actually registered them anywhere, and it does take years, uh, many years, which in fact is why, um, I do feel it's necessary to add a little teeth to make, and I think too, if you really look at a lot of towns and a lot of cities, but a lot of towns too, um, that have a lot of historic buildings, probably more than Ashland, but Ashland has some, and I, I'd like to see us keep more of them. Um, but they are, they are actually becoming very historic friendly. And I think people like to move and they like to go to places that are historic friendly, because people like, um, they like historical areas and historic districts and historic homes. There are people that like to knock them down too, but I do think that the trend right now is that people do like historic.
Yeah, no, I'm not disagreeing, and, and what, all I'm saying is I like it. Me personally, I like where you're going with it. But like Marcelo is saying, there may be the same concerns at town meeting, and so all I'm suggesting is, long-term, if this does not, uh, is not a community-supported change, I, I think there's some, some consideration that should be made to perhaps discussing a mill district or a historic district. Um, and there are communities who do that for economic reasons, and, you know, I, I lived in Maine for some time, many Maine communities have historic mill districts um, that we may benefit from as a town, so just food for thought.
I think we're, we're probably, um, gonna be wrapping up, uh, this for the evening, and if planning board members have final comments, please get them in mind, but meanwhile, um, I'll allow some public comment on this. Kathy, I think, had her hand up first. Kathy, do you wanna unmute?
Sorry, yes. So, um, I just wanted to add to the conversation that I think part of the concern is that there are historic properties in the past few years that have come down all over town, and there is a list, the Historical Commission in the past made up a list of historically significant buildings, and I think they're really important, and like, um, some of the people are saying, they're, they're a valued part of our communities, and I think this is partly where this group is coming from in terms of trying to come up with a more robust way for a current owner, before they get a demolition delay, to actually make some real, um, real efforts of trying to use that building in a different way. So, um, down the street from me, the only notice that was given about the possibility that they were gonna try to sell this building was a little paper notice about two weeks, maybe, before the building came down. It said, oh, this building's for sale. And, and that's, that's not appropriate, and I think that's partly why this, this, there's a whole bunch of people really concerned about this in town now. Um, they, they wanna see these, these structures add culture, they add a sense of place, they add regionalism to our town, and we're literally in the past year, we're watching a whole bunch of it get destroyed. For what? So, that's my comments.
Thank you, um. Peter, I would let you take over, but it looks like we just have one more hand up, so.
Could I, could I just respond to that comment as far as, because we're looking at a draft bylaw change, right? So, if, if there's a genuine concern about the efforts involved during the delay period, right? What is the point of a delay period? It's not to prevent demolition forever and ever. It could also be, maybe sometimes it's to prevent demolition, but really, the language that I like in Cambridge is, the intent of the delay period is not always to prevent demolition, but to provide an opportunity for the development of preservation solutions to be considered, right? So, maybe part of the teeth should be a rare definition of what the delay is about. Right? What is the intention of this bylaw? Maybe that's not clear in our original bylaw. Maybe there should be a stronger section that says that the intent of this is not necessarily to prevent demolition, the intent is to allow for opportunity for development of preservation solutions, for economic growth, for economic opportunity, for whatever it is that is the intention that is missing, right? Um, because if we're just preventing demolition, what do we gain? For twelve months?
So, actually, in the current demolition delay bylaw, section one twenty-five one, intent and purpose, this bylaw is enacted for the purpose of protecting and preserving significant buildings within the town of Ashland, which constitute or reflect distinctive features of the architectural or historical resources of the town, and to encourage the owners of such buildings to seek out alternative options to preserve, rehabilitate, or restore such buildings rather than to demolish them, thereby promoting the public welfare and preserving the cultural heritage of the town to achieve these purposes. The Ashland Historical Commission is authorized to advise the inspector of buildings with respect to the issuance of permits for demolition of significant buildings. The issuance of demolition permits of significant buildings is regulated as provided by this law. So that really kind of covers, I think, not only what you just read that, I think, what did you say, Cambridge had, but also it might even already be a little bit more specific.
I, I disagree with that. I think you should go back and read the Cambridge one. I think they're similar, but there's something about economics that Anna's talking about, and not just a feel-good feeling for everybody in the community that I thought was significant.
I think a little bit more precision, Helen, would strengthen it. Because what are we, I, what I'm, what I'm commenting on is you are reacting, and I'm, I'm working off of the prior public comment, you are reacting to add teeth to this bylaw because the concern is, what does demolition delay really do? And what I'm telling you is, make that section stronger. Focus on those opportunities, those economic opportunities, um, that, we should strengthen that piece of it, if that's the intent of the teeth. And, yeah, the language might be there, but it's clearly not being applied.
I, I think it's also like an acknowledgement from my point of view, and I love, I love historic buildings too, but I don't wanna live in one. Um, they have a, a whole host of problems, and expensive problems, and, and things, and spaces that are hard to fix and to live in in a modern way. So I think there's also a, a thought about, you know, what, what I enjoy as a citizen walking down the street and the rights of a property owner who, who, who owns this property that now everyone likes from the outside, but no one's gonna help pay to renovate the thing, right? So I think, um, there's that kind of conflict between me, Ashland resident, walking by, and me, Ashland resident homeowner, building owner, that may be kind of stuck with this thing, right? So that, there's a sensitivity to that, that I think Marcelo sometimes is referring to, when he's talking about what the public is thinking, when they're putting themselves in the shoes of owning, owning maybe an older home. Um, I'm don't mean to read into what Marcelo was saying, but I think it's that kind of conflict, maybe, um, that people, that people have.
Then how do you resolve, how do you resolve the conflict, though, with historic preservation? Where, where do you draw the line?
I, I, I guess, Tricia, what you, what you're saying, it, it kind of, it, it makes sense. It's kind, kind of how I feel. I, I think, and, and, and it's also a matter of, uh, of, of the logic of communicating an idea. And I think that's probably what, a big part of why this failed on, on, on the spring. When you present something, the saying, okay, we have these, these regulations, and we wanna add teeth to it. That, that's, that's a very negative way to put it, because it's like saying, you know, I have a stick, and I'm, I'm gonna get a bigger stick instead of showing the carrot, too. So, so it is, it is, it's things that go together. You have a carrot and a stick, and they both make sense. But you need to show them both. I think that's what Tricia just said.
But, I mean, I, I.
I do wanna actually get to Joan, because I actually, I was gonna let her go, and then, uh, it's been a while, so Joan, please feel free to unmute.
Joan, from Friday, one Shore Road. Um, I'm on the Ashland, um, the, the group with Helen, and, um, I was part of the group that, that helped to come up with some of the, some of the verbiage. Um, I do agree with the, um, with the, the paragraph that, that she added, I think, as far as trying to explain what is expected of the person who is trying to develop or, or demolish um, the building, and, um, rather than just waiting out the, the twelve months or the nine months, whichever is agreed upon. Um, I also come from a perspective, um, when my sister-in-law passed away, the home was older, and unfortunately, it was in pretty bad shape, and, um, I don't think anyone's intent is to just make someone hold on to the building. Um, and to your point, it, it's not easy to write that into the, into the bylaw at this point, the way the bylaw is currently written, without a complete overhaul. Um, and I do, I do think, although I do, I would say, Anna, that what you read, I would like to, I'd like a little time to look at that, and I'm sure Helen will too. Um, because I think there was a couple, there were, was a line in there that I, that I thought was, um, maybe was, was helpful in the sense of that it indicated that everyone was, that the, the intent was not just to make someone not be able to demolish, demolish a building, that there was, it was just to take the time to check it out and see what, see what was, was important. Um, and I, then, but on the flip side, I am very concerned about the position that Ashland is in right now, because I think we are at a critical, where we're losing a lot of our buildings. And I think if we don't do something to create a little more, um, if, if you don't like the word teeth, I understand that, I understand what you're saying about that, but make it a little, a little more defined, maybe, is, is, would, would be what I would say, a little more defined as to what we, what is expected. Um, then I think we're gonna, we're gonna lose even more buildings than we need to. Um, but I also think that, that the list of houses, et cetera, as Ca- as I believe it was Kathy said, um, where there is something out there, I've heard, I haven't seen it, um, that there is something out there, and I would hope that the, um, Historic Commission forward-going will start to look at that. So, those are my comments. Um, I do support the, the bylaw changes, um, as, uh, in progress. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are, are there any kind of new and final comments from the planning board before we wrap this up for, for this evening? I think we have unloaded more feedback on Ms. Nicole than probably she was expecting. And anyone? Okay.
Okay, well, I, I would just, I would just like to thank everyone, uh, for taking time tonight.
Thanks for, thanks for coming. I think, I, I think it goes without saying that the planning board is interested in historical preservation. It's just, it's, it's just, um, it's, it's, it's not as a black of a white, it's black and white issue as things always seem, right? It's always more complicated than that, as the planning board seems to learn every single meeting we have. So, um, I appreciate you coming, and we're happy to talk to you.
Thank you.
And, and I'll, I'll add that I'll send, uh, the intent language from the Cambridge, from the Cambridge bylaw to Peter, I guess. Peter, maybe you can email it to Helen. Um, to this point of strengthening the intent language a little bit. If she, if that's something that is helpful.
Yeah, no, I would appreciate that. That would be, that'd be great.
I will do so, if I, I will pass it along.
Sounds good, thank you. All right, next on our agenda then, um, we're starting, uh, number four, which is our public hearing section. The first public hearing under that is, um, two twenty-five Pond Street, special permit and site plan review. This is the McDonald's, um, drive-thru. Uh, Peter, can you give us a brief update on that?
So the McDonald's drive-thru, uh, the applicant went in front of the design review committee last Thursday, uh, and they are going back in front of the design review committee, uh, as I, we had some comments. Uh, and, uh, and so with that said, the applicant here, or represented by border engineering, emailed a letter requesting a continuance. Um, and they are looking to come back onto the planning board agenda on, uh, the next meeting, which would be September twenty-second. Um, and I think, uh, they will be meeting with design review committee, um, Thursday, um, the fifteenth, uh, so hopefully, uh, when we hear them back again on the twenty-second. Um, um, it's gonna be wrapped up, and we can, uh, uh, review the project from there. So, uh, within our email that was accepted on September seventh, says, hi, Peter, as discussed, we respectfully request for the McDonald's project to be continued to Thursday, uh, from this Thursday's planning board meeting, which would be obviously nine, eight, uh, to the next available meeting on nine twenty-two, uh, as requested by Dan Allen, the, uh, assistant project engineer. So, at this point, I would ask the planning board to accept the continuance, uh, and move this to the next meeting on the twenty-second.
Any questions? I was just asking if there's any questions on that first, before we doesn't look like it. Okay, Kate?
To make a motion that we accept the request for continuance for two twenty-five Pond Street to September twenty-second.
I'll second it.
All right, and a roll call vote?
Deepa and Kate, aye.
Anna, testament, it's the aye.
Oh. And Tricia Kendall, aye. So that is continued, um, until the twenty-second. All right, so next on the agenda is one hundred Chestnut Street site plan review, and I will just remind people, because I think we have a few more people on here, that the five oh one Pond Street public hearing and the three hundred Elliott Street public hearing yet to come are, have both asked for continuances. So, um, so we will be focusing now on one hundred Chestnut Street site plan review. Peter, can we start that with an update from you?
Sure. So at the last planning board meeting, uh, which was, um, I think the the first meeting in August, we reviewed this project, uh, obviously, and, uh, we had some comments and some things that they were working on. Um, and, uh, for, uh, and so here, the applicant has submitted a couple of applications. I mean, a couple, uh, of, of emails and memos um, that I'm gonna first introduce, and then I'll think about the applicant. Uh, but miss the, uh, based on development, he is represented by Mr. Roy McDowell, um, and his sons, uh, Roy and Todd, and Eric, uh, is here also as the civil engineer. Um, they emailed us one, uh, one email that came in on August, uh, eighteenth, and that is concerning the projected rents, uh, for one hundred Chestnut Street, that was requested by the planning board. Um, and then all. And then also there are two memos that were sent into the planning board and sent out. The first one is concerning a review of the loading areas and the handling of packages in the mailroom that shall be utilized within the project. And then the second memo, which was dated September 1st, highlights the benefits that 100 Chestnut Street will be granted to the town of Ashland and the neighborhood in the area. And so I think the applicant will probably want to go through that list in more detail with the board, so I will let them do that. But before I hand it over to the applicant, I do want to note that the Faferr Company has started in, in, on their 2015 punch list to finish areas of the Village of Americas. And I just want to note to planning board members and to the public that paving is done, was done today and was completed on Queen Isabella, which was a good first, which was a good thing, because that's something that obviously has been outstanding for a long time. And so with that said, the Faferr Company is, is starting to move and complete those punch lists that were drawn up out of town years ago. This current site plan, I do not believe it's changed too much. But with that said, in addition to everything, I have drafted a very, a preliminary draft, which was sent out to the planning board, was also sent to the applicant. Obviously, there has been some comments that came back. I haven't had time to make those edits, but obviously this is something that we can kind of talk about tonight. And so if I'm missing anything, I do apologize, but I would like to turn it over, if it's appropriate, to the applicant to give us an update on where things stand and to run through the memorandums that have been submitted.
Uh, thank you, Peter. I think Todd is gonna run us through a list. If you could let Eric have access or Todd, if you'd like to have access.
I could, I could run the slideshow.
Okay.
Just hold on a second. Todd, you are now a ghost.
Thank you. This is Todd McAlver, based on development. I'm just gonna share my screen now. All right. Well, thank you very much for having us tonight. Just gonna run through a little bit of the information we sent in and as well as a refresher and just some of the, the green features that we've kind of implemented as we've worked with the planning board through this process. So some of the benefits of this project, I was asked just to compile a list of some of the benefits. And as you know, when, for every unit, there's a thousand dollar payment towards public safety toward, to the town of Ashland. So there'll be a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in payments to the, for public safety to Ashland, for the residential units and another approximately ten thousand dollars for the commercial space, which is I think a thousand dollars for every thousand square feet of commercial space. We'll be building a bus shelter, as we've discussed, on the corner of Chestnut Street and Queen Isabella Way. We'll be contributing a hundred fifty thousand dollars to the neighborhood, the condo association. They are, been having discussions on how they're gonna use that, whether it's adding lighting to their neighborhood or towards a playground. There's, they're having discussions on how they're gonna use those funds, but we'll be making a contribution to the HOA there. We're building a dog park. I just went out there today and checked because we had all the, the wetlands flagged. We have submitted our NOI to the Conservation Commission and that is ongoing. We hopefully will be there in a couple of weeks, but we'll be building a dog park for the community use. You know, we will also manage that. So the apartment building will supply dog waste bags and clean out the trash can on site to make sure that's, doesn't get out of hand. We are proposing to make a twenty-five thousand dollar payment to the Upper Trails, Charles Trail Committee. And this is to help to get them started and pursuing various easements and make that trail connection that they've been talking about for a while. And as we discussed, we'll be providing eighteen affordable units per DHGT guidelines. And we know there is a clause that allows us to add a preference for residents of Ashland to get those units in a preferred manner. This will also complete a project that's been going on in the Village of the Americas for twenty years in Ashland. Finally, complete this project. And if you look at now, it's, it'll kind of revitalize this underutilized commercial site that doesn't really, you can't really see the commercial uses from, from Chestnut and also the vacant fenced-off parcel that's just sits there and is, you know, not open to the public and not accessible. We'll also be paying significant fees for water connection sewer and building permit fees, a lot, a significant amount of fees to the town of Ashland. And we estimate that it'll increase tax revenue from the current amount of about sixteen thousand four hundred twenty-seven dollars to approximately six hundred thousand dollars a year. Now, we base that on a comparable product of the Cerus Apartments. But that will obviously be determined by the assessor going forward. One other thing we have decided to do is that we're offering to make a contribution of twenty-five thousand dollars to the Ashland Affordable Housing Trust Fund to be used, used as they see fit. We discussed about doing something additional for affordable housing and we came up with this idea, wanted to present that to the board. One question Peter mentioned to me is asked how we handle packages and package delivery on site. While we do have a loading zone right in the front, when the building, when the packages get to the building, we, we find that having a package room has been, you know, we've done trial there. We do package concierge, which are lockers. We've had other air, package solutions that weren't as good as this. But we found the secure package room where residents use either a key fob or a code to get in. And the package delivery services all have their own codes too, and they can get in and leave the packages. And given we have onsite management and leasing staff, we found that sometimes when Amazon subcontractors drivers are not diligent with putting packages away, they'll be able to pick those up and move them into the secure location. And, you know, this, this is good for everyone because people are happy that their packages are protected. There's cameras seeing who goes in, who's inside. So if somebody's taking a lot of packages that don't belong to them, it's just a, a good system to have that can track people and keep organized packages. And sorry, it's not, there we go. And some of the design smart growth system features we've talked about in the past, but I think I was asked for a refresher. We're gonna design and build a project to lead certifiable standards. We're not anticipating going forward with doing the whole certification because that's a costly process. And, you know, there's contact development, heat island reduction, community resources, construction waste management, dark sky approved lighting fixtures and LED lighting fixtures. What you're gonna do is reduce water use with low-flow fixtures, EV parking, roof design to be solar-ready, Energy Star appliances, I just mentioned LED lighting and low-flow toilet, toilets. And are, we can use compact electric high-efficiency hydro air system. So that's the electric heat system. We're not gonna have the units use the gas. This will actually be our first time we've done that. And, you know, we're excited to, to work with Ashland and do this at the, at the units for the electric heaters. And then we'll be using Energy Star dual-floping e-glass and a bike storage. We'll both have interior and exterior storage and a fixed station. That's really the presentation for tonight. That we would, you know, see if there are any other questions or anything we could go over. And if there's any questions, we can talk about the, the draft decision. Happy to do that. Thank you.
Is the, is the, could, well, Tricia, I don't know what order you want to do this in. And I, I was gonna start asking questions about the sustainability piece only because that was the last slide.
You know, there, there's so much, there's so much ahead of us that I have just went to reprint the list that was circulated, when, when we met about this project last, we created a list of all of our concerns. And, and some information on that went out to the committee, you know, information that was already present and then some things that we don't have the information on yet. But in looking at that list, you know, one of the things on the list was review the sustainability aspects of the project. So I think it's fine if we, we want to start right there. It's on the list of things. Not that we can't add to the list, but it's on the list of things we have already said that we want to talk about. So if you want to start at sustainability, I say go for it.
Yeah. I mean, I think that last slide is a good, good starting point for discussion because the questions I had had, had to do with, on the sustainability piece. I pulled out, I found the April letter we got from, I think it was Matt. Sorry, I want to pronounce his name correctly. Marshquist from the Sustainability Committee, some of his thoughts. And I just want to kind of go through those key points, see how that slide addresses them. And then I think we also have a checklist or a suggested, excuse me, a suggested list from the Sustainability Committee that, that's on, on our agenda for later today, having to do with net zero. So if it's okay with you, Tricia, maybe we'll go through Matt's letter, the checklist, and just kind of talk about that last slide relative to those things.
And just for clarification, we did not have a place to talk, to talk about this list of sustainability amongst the committee. That's only a part of the reports. So Sustainability Committee was under the reports to give, but wouldn't involve a whole discussion of the, of the letter that they had sent or the text that they had sent. But, but that said, we all have it and I think it can be a part of the discussion for this project.
Okay. Would it be possible for, for the applicant to put that last slide back up, the sustainability slide? And maybe we can kind of like use that as a, as a visual to help us go through things. So I think one of Matt's points or questions was the intrigue on the, the LED certifiable standards. And there was a request to really have the planning board understand better what, what standards are being applied. I understand that there's, there isn't a move for formal certification, but could you tell us a little bit more about that first point? And what, what are the requirements that you're hoping to meet?
Matt, or I'll, I'll, I'll hand that over to Matt Marata, who is our architect. But I believe below the list here, like the compact development, heat island reduction are the items that we would hit that's required. But I'll hand that over to Matt Marata.
Thank you, Matt Marata Icon Architecture. I think, Anna, what you're asking for is a initial lead checklist, which would kind of go through what we would propose to strive to hit for our, our kind of number, how high of a lead target we, we think we could get. We haven't done that. I mean, we certainly can put one together for this project.
I think that would be great if the, if the rest of the board is in agreement. I certainly don't want to push that if no one else is interested. But I think, I think it would be helpful for us.
Yeah, I think that's a typical thing to do in trying to understand, you know, how, how close is it to meeting, to meeting those standards? Obviously, to really get the certification, there's lots of different kind of reviews that have to happen. You know, and it does, I think it can become quite a long and expensive process to, to make that happen. I'm not interested. Oh, go ahead, Marcelo.
I, I agree with you, Tricia. For this size of building, this, this, these days is pretty, it's pretty standard. And I think if they can provide a checklist showing, you know, certifiability, I, I, I think that's, that's pretty, pretty standard.
Yeah, it's a difference between having the plaque on your building and not having the plaque on your building, so.
And could I, just because I'm ignorant, I'm not an architect, what, what would it cost to get cert, certification?
Um, the last time I heard, and I honestly, Anna, don't know the exact numbers, but it's in the tens of thousands, high tens of thousands.
It's not insignificant and typically, o, o, unless there's a, 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 a big incentive for why to do it or a requirement by the city or what have you.
Right.
And that, the, the plaque doesn't give you anything else.
And it's all, the tent, that's just for the, the application and it's usually based on how big the building is. Then there's also all the consultants' fees and tracking. There's a lot involved throughout the whole project that would need to go into that stuff.
I don't know how we could possibly afford that. The thing is, is getting very difficult at the moment.
It's several hundred thousand dollars at the end of the day.
And I guess the important point is that typically to, if you want to do it right, that's something you do from the beginning of the design, part of the, of the process, before you establish how the building is gonna work and what have you, not, not afterwards. So I think if, if, if the applicant proves with the checklist that they have made these, the, the right decisions towards that goal, I find that acceptable myself.
Yeah, I mean, li, listen, I'm, I'm just curious. I, I noticed we're talking about, what is it, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to this condo association? Twenty-five thousand dollars to, we're, there, there's money already being dedicated and I understand that there may not be more money. But it's helpful to know kind of what we're weighing. Where are we putting money in? Where do we want to put the money is kind of where I'm going with this. The other question I had, Matt had mentioned, and this might be addressed by the electric high-efficiency hydro air system or maybe the, the water heater. So I think one of the, his recommendations was to consider heat pumps, electric heat pumps rather than a new gas system. Could you comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to comment on that. That's exactly correct. And, you know, all, a lot of, we're seeing this happen more and more and on our projects, moving to all-electric, much more efficient, no gas to any of the buildings. I think we talked about earlier in some of the other meetings that we are providing gas to the commercial spaces just in case they need it and also for gas for the gas grills in the courtyard and maybe a fireplace within the building.
Yeah, what about the, what about the comment question?
Well, it'll all be, will all act everywhere, right?
The, the one thing Anna wanted to mention is the reason we changed to these electric heat pumps was based on the planning board feedback and, and this letter as well. So that's why we did make that change.
Excellent. That's all I needed to kind of confirm, that that was already addressed. That's helpful to know. And then he had mentioned the induction cook, cooktops versus gas stoves. I know nothing about this.
We are, we are doing electric ranges. We're not doing gas ranges.
Okay, great. So it sounds like you agreed with that recommendation as well. And then the, the solar. So, you know, he, he made an excellent point that I think I agree with, which is, there is, well, first of all, the, having the roof be ready for solar is, is great. But the confirmation that there is, that the building is structurally sound for solar and that there's insulation of the attic spaces to allow for later solar. Can we get a confirmation on both of those points?
Sure. So, yes, we, the structure will be solar-ready. We have, it's, it's actually quite simple for us. It's just an added dead load to the roof, which we are, which our structural engineer will accommodate when, during the CDs. And then for the installation itself, like we mentioned, it'll be solar-ready. So there'll be conduits run up the roof to make future connections. And typically, what we've been seeing on these buildings is a non-balasted system that's kind of laying, laying flat as we illustrated in our building section. So that's, it's very minimal impact on the weight of the roof itself.
And then the, the attic space insulation he had mentioned, which sometimes gets people in trouble.
So we'll, we typically do, I'm not quite sure what, what that means, but I, I can tell you, we do rigid insulation above the, above the roof deck itself. And then also partially fill the cavity below that with some insulation as well to get a higher R value, to kind of hit our marks. Not sure what the issue specifically is regarding now.
Can you re, reread that comment there?
Uh, we may want to confirm that it will be structurally sound for solar, as well as asking about the insulation of the attic spaces. Some of the multifamilies in town that do not have well-insulated attics are not good candidates for solar due to ice dam issues.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, we don't, since I think that's referring to pitched roofs. You know, we had, we, while we do have the pitched roofs on the perimeter building, our primary roof structure is flat. And we do have quite a bit of outboard exterior continuous insulation, so that should not be an issue whatsoever.
Okay.
The, and just so you know, the R values and the solar-ready roof, those are part of Ashland's being on the higher building code, the stretch code. Yeah, so we, so every building in Ashland has to be, that goes up, has to be solar, have the ability structurally to have solar and has to accommodate a certain higher level of insulation than the base building code. So.
To confirm we're there. And then, and then of course, there's, there's the bigger discussion about. To confirm we're there. And then, and then of course, there's, there's the bigger discussion about Matt had made good points how there is always a benefit to putting solar on a project from the get-go. Can we talk a little bit about that? I know that, that can be controversial and, and has some costs, but there are, are also incentives and tax incentives, et cetera. Is that something that you've explored, Matt? And, and where are you, you know, how did you decide not to do that from the get-go? Tell us more about that.
Um, I, based on, do you want to take that one?
Well, I, I'd say, uh, this is Todd McDowell, that it's something we certainly want to do. And I know tax credits and everything change constantly and what's available. It is certainly an attempt to, to do that, because I, I would like to do it. I think it makes good sense operationally and, and environmentally. But I, I just have a hard time saying we're one thousand percent going to do it, though I'd say in most all likelihood, it is something we're going to do right away. I just want to make sure that when we're actually in that construction process, that the incentives are there versus having to wait a couple of years. I'll tell you, the, the newest, uh, was it the Inflation Reduction Act? There actually was a lot of money for solar. I don't know how that's going to get put to use, but that's certainly something we're looking into.
I mean, I, we can come back to this point, because I think that's, that's a key point for, for me. I don't know how other members of the board feel about it, but we can come back to it. And there's two more kind of simpler things, which is the EV parking bicycles on site. Can you just confirm that that's happening? And, and how many spots are we talking about for both the EV parking, but also bicycle parking?
We, I can tell you, we haven't done the physical layout for our bike room yet, so for, there will be exterior bike spots, but for the interior, we haven't gotten to a, uh, far enough along plan to design the whole bike room. Eric or Matt, do you recall how many ex, uh, how many, uh, each charging stations we're starting with versus, I know those are expandability. We're running a conduit for some expansion. How many were starting with? Was it?
We have currently, uh, two, two locations of, of four. So two locations of two, of two, of two stations, I believe, and then our expandability.
Dual station, so that's eight, eight charging locations.
Eight charging locations. And then we, we have some in the garage that we haven't fully located yet, but we are doing as well as expansion for others.
And so that, and, and as far as bicycle, uh, parking, that will be, any sense of what we're talking about?
Yeah, sorry, Matt, could you handle that? I'm not sure how thick we usually make our bike room.
Yeah, no, it's usually, and we usually base, if it's nothing in the zoning, we usually base it on the market study, i- if we have one available to us or what, um, the developers have seen on similar-sized projects. I can tell you, you know, likely it'll be, it's a good, usually ends up being a good-sized room, and it'll, it's not going to be like a room that's like five bikes. It's, it's, you know, you know, up twenty, thirty, forty bikes, and there's always a fix-it station involved. It becomes a, a part of the amenity package typically for these developers. And it's likely going to be in building one, and so it can be easily accessed, uh, through the garage, the kind of undercover garage there.
Yeah, and I, and I think I was thinking more on the outside, right? So we're trying to build a village here, kind of a, a community. As you might know, there's a lot of kids on bikes in that, in that area. And we're aiming for walkability, right, for our community long-term. So I, I was not even thinking internal amenities to the residents or kind of the market rate, if you will. I was thinking more of the neighborhood and the community and outside parking and.
Okay, like instead of having some in the commercial area and that kind of courtyard, there's some other locations around site. We haven't come up with a direct number, but Matt.
I think the, the landscape plan definitely illustrates some, and I would say probably two bike racks is more than sufficient for the kind of size of what we're looking at here.
And I think our current plan shows racks for twelve outdoor bikes.
That sounds, that's a good number. That sounds good.
Okay. And then Matt had also mentioned the onsite curbside composting infrastructure in addition to the recycling and trash. Is that a possibility?
I'm sorry, I was raised me now. Can you repeat the question?
Uh, onsite curbside composting infrastructure in addition to the recycling and trash, is, is onsite compost a possibility?
Not really. It's something we've done before, and it's definitely a little tougher in a, in a kind of a commercial area, especially I, I know there's some things that can happen with, with fires and composting, and it's, it's something that would be very reticent from insurance, what place to, to, to put on site.
Well, I also think the smell factor would be an issue in a close confine.
It'd be interesting to know if big buildings do this. I don't know how big, big buildings do composting. It is a different kind of yeah, different kind of animal than trash or recycling. So I, I don't know a lot about that myself.
Yeah, you end up with one person who's irresponsible, doesn't know what to put in there, and it can kind of ruin it. Someone throwing their doggy ice cream in, or, or who knows what. It kind of goes south fast.
Usually that's more successful when the community does it, like in California, and a lot of towns, for example, that, that part of the trash service picking that up, uh, as opposed to doing individual, people doing it differently, it can create problems. So it would be interesting if at some point our trash collection could add that as part of the services.
Well, I, I was going to say, Ashland is participating in, in a program like that. There is a compost program where Ashland residents can sign up, and the more that sign up, the, the cheaper it becomes.
Yeah, I, I do that, but again, it, it, that's an individual house kind of making the decision versus the large scale. It's, it's a little bit, it's just a little bit different. Like, I don't think our, I'm not sure our schools do it. It's just, it's just a little tricky.
Where I was going with it, I wonder if there's a possibility for kind of a bulk purchase, if you will, on behalf of the community. So that others in that community, that village, if you, if you will, can benefit from this. So for example, if, if the village purchases X amount of units for residential use that are available, that is a benefit to the community, to the whole community. So just, just brainstorming and thinking about infrastructure, you know, this is hundreds of residents that are moving in, and what can be done to integrate with the entire community, the entire village, if you will. So it sounds like not necessarily something you're interested in right now.
Anna, I can, I can tell you that out of all the projects that I've done, and all the lead projects and passive house projects, we've, to my knowledge, we've never implemented a composting program per se, just because of the difficulty with individuals, you know, getting them to respectfully follow the rules, and it's, 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 it's a lot. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I would love to see something like that happen in the future. I just don't, we have not, I haven't heard of any developers successfully implementing it on developments of this scale.
And just make to know, our Sustainability Committee has produced, uh, started a composting program through a company called Black Earth. The town of Ashland also did, you know, provide, you know, the town group funds that we have, grant funds. Uh, we have purchased a number of bins for Ashland residents to have for free uh, as they subscribe to Black Earth. And so that's how we have started that program up. So any Ashland resident can, 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 can prescribe or, or get a subscription to Black Earth, to start composting.
Yeah, that's, that's what I have, Peter. It's just a difference between in my home, putting a little green bin out of the curb. That's my little green bin that I haul back and forth to the fur, curb for my family versus a hundred and seventy-four units coming downstairs with their little green bins and putting them off at the curb. You know, it's, it's a different scale of operations that there, it's not quite. I'm not sure if Black Earth has a, a, a big building program. But their, but their individual house program, I cannot see how that would work with this kind of scale.
Yeah, I mean, we do have individual houses in that development, right? And this is a project to complete the village.
Yeah, if you've driven up there on Trash and Recycling Day, you will see what the streets look like on Trash and Recycling Day. You can almost not drive through sometimes because of the trash and recycling bins from everybody. It's, it's really, it's pretty amazing, actually.
Right, but that's the beauty of, of, of compost, right? Compost means less waste, less trash. So anyway, I, I think it's worth, it's a worthwhile discussion. I'm glad we're having it. It may not be the right fit for this project as far as the logistics of it, but I'm glad we're, we're brainstorming.
Yeah, I agree. Like, I do it at my house. I'm just, I'm not, we would want to have something really established before we put that on this neighborhood, so.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm just envisioning, you know, as Ashland as we grow, we have projects coming in. It is an opportunity to think about bulk, bulk contracts, if you will, with Black Earth or other vendors that we should start thinking creatively if net zero is truly our goal. Anyway, it's good to brainstorm. So, so full circle, back to the hu- the hard stuff, the solar. You know, I, I don't know where the rest of the board is, but I, I think a lot of these things, if there's agreement on the board, other than the, the, the composting, if the other features, there is some agreement. It sounds like most of the items that Matt mentioned have been implemented, and we just need to make sure that we're specific in our decisions so that it's all in there, you know. But the solar piece to me is an interesting one, and I, I don't know, Tricia, when you want to talk about it? But I, I definitely would like to see, to, to see solar on this project from the get-go.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, um, uh, uh, just two things before I get there. One is that what's missing from the list, this list that they've given is, um, a comment on the, the vegetation and the, at least I don't think I see it there, and the stormwater management, which I think is part of the sustainable design strategy. I think you've already gone to seventy-five percent native species. I think there's some comment in there about avoiding invasive species. And then going back to the EV parking, um, you know, I'm curious as to how, um, you know, how easy is that to put in right now to, to make more of those? I saw, I saw that we had some of the spots. It was a, in, in a way, a small portion of the spots. I know that Boston is considering with their stretch code, um, their new stretch code, I think the regulations came out, or the draft, I should say, draft came out at the end of June. I think they were going to start looking for having all spots EV, like conduit, say, or the, you know, the, the conduit in the ground, and then having twenty-five percent of residential spots, that would be in use, that could be the, the slower charge stations, that that might be, that might be above and beyond where we're at right now. But I'm wondering, you know, how far we can, we can push that as well. And that might be a, a question with the solar, because I, I agree to have, you know, we're, we're going net zero. I know what you mean about things change year per year, and it can be a huge cost swing one way or the other, but is there, is there at least a timeframe you can give us, there's a, that, where this thing would be solar?
Well, I, I think, as Todd mentioned earlier, this is Roy speaking, depending on how the budget comes in, and depending on what government assistance there may be, we would love to get it done during construction, so when the building's finished, it's finished. But if it's a budget breaker and makes a project so expensive that we can't get financing to build it, then it's self-defeating. What I'd like to propose, if you really want to get it done, is to give us up to two years after CFO on the buildings, so we can start generating enough revenue that we can afford to actually install them.
I mean, I, 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 it, you know, I, I think that's a reasonable request, as long as there's, that it actually happens, right? So.
Well, yeah, if it's a new decision, it would have to happen.
Yeah, I mean, and, I, I think where I'm going with it is I think that would make this quite exciting as far as, as, as the visual impact of this. I don't know if you've done it before.
You're talking about the solar panels?
Yeah, um, in, in this kind of project of this size.
This will be a first in this project this size.
And I would think that that could be exciting for you as a company, and for, certainly for Ashland as well. And I could see, I, I would think it's a win-win for everyone. It's a, it's a win for Ashland as far as moving us towards net zero. It's, I think it's a win for the community as far as a real powerful visual to what we're putting forward as far as values for the community for that particular area of Ashland. And I would think it would be great for your company as well.
We agree with everything you're saying. We're just asking that, that we give it a little time to two years, and frankly, if we can do it sooner, we'll do it sooner, but up to two years after certificate of occupancy to get, generate revenue so we can afford to pay for it. Now, if there are tremendous subsidies by the government, we're happy to do it upfront.
I, like, like Anna said, for, for me, that seems reasonable. What, what about the rest of the board?
Is reasonable.
Agreed.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think that's spectacular, and, and it would be, you know, very exciting to, to, to have that, that research done as quickly as possible, because if we can get it done sooner, I'd like to see that. I think, you know, it would be amazing to do, you know, if, if we approve this project, I think it would be really powerful to have that kind of moment, if you will, um, early on.
We're happy to work with you on that.
Well, one thing we do need to do is get a full construction drawings done, so you can actually see how many, where the panels will go and fit, and then that, so that needs to happen before we can really start pushing that process forward with a solar company.
Right. Yeah, because that'll be a little bit working back and forth between the structural engineer, between other, o- other aspects of the project that need that roof for other spaces, and for how the solar panels laid out, given that they come in certain sizes.
Peter, are there resources within the town, um, you know, uh, that we can offer to the developer to assist in this research, in the sense that I can see this also being a benefit economically to our community, you know? I'm imagining a press release, you know, Ashland's first fully solar multi-development. I can see this being beneficial to the town. I wonder if there's resources we can offer to help with that research, where there could be, you know, some benefits there to the town itself as well.
I think this is, I mean, go ahead, Peter.
No, please, I would love to help, and it, and it matter, you know, obviously, if it's a press release and or, you know, anything of that nature. I'm happy to, uh, you know, are you going down the line of financial funds and?
I, I, I wonder if there's, for example, correct me if I'm wrong, there may have been some prior work that the town did relating to solar energy that we may have contacts for, for this, for this applicant, um, or kind of resources. I could be wrong.
I am happy to, you know, we have a, we have a contract with Amoresco, who's located over in Frampton, and obviously they have a solar company, they were partnered with um, Ashland to do the, the, the solar facility on the town's cap landfill. Citizens Energy, Joe Kennedy, they are the ones that developed the solar array, the sixteen-acre solar array on the, on the, on the cap, by the end of landfill in a lot of the area around the, uh, the, um, excuse me, Memorial Drive. So anytime I can help based on development, or not just based on, anytime I try, I could help a developer with solar, I'm, I'm happy to do so. And, and go down to, to introduce parties.
Yeah, just, just know that this is, this is a, you know, pretty standard process that, and any builder is going to use for subcontractors that you're probably getting, uh, alternative bids, um, based on the equipment and, and prices and installation. And that would be a, a fairly normal, uh, part of their process.
Yeah, and, and we have resources we know that are in the solar business that we can check with as well.
Awesome. And so I think now I'm just switching over to the sustainability net zero document, Tricia, and I, I want to say you may have covered the the first item, which was the green stormwater infrastructure. Did you already?
Yeah, I think most of those, those things on that, that list are, um,
Are covered.
I- i- if this is the letter that Margie sent not too long ago, that, yeah.
The only one I'm not familiar with is a dark sky lighting. Is that?
That's, that's already on their list.
Good, okay, just making sure. And then the last one, I think, is the complete streets. And, uh, it, yeah, just to refresh my memory, is there a sidewalk that, not a sidewalk, is there a crosswalk that's being added, or, uh, could you just comment a little bit on, on the?
Well, per Peter's comments earlier today, uh, the Faford team has been out there the last couple of days. They actually took down all the existing pavement, milled it down to gravel. They did a binder earlier today, not only on Queen Isabella, but also on Chestnut Street as well. They've raised all the manhole covers, they reset the curbing, they're putting in the curbing for the, um, handicap ramps, and when we complete the sidewalk with the project, we will then complete those handicap ramps.
It is, and they may be doing that, Big Roy, I'm not sure, but if they, if they don't, we will finish it.
Either way, I did speak to, um, to the Fat, Fatford people today, and I believe that Peter, they met with you in the ConCom, uh, out on the site uh, out on the site relative to the retention basin. And apparently they're going through the process for Concom to get approval to go in and clean that out.
Yes, I can confirm that with you. Uh, actually, that was the week I was sick, uh, so I wasn't able to attend that meeting. However, our conservation agent, Becca Sol- Solomon, and Doug Small, D P W director, along with Mike Carter, who's our representative in G C G, did meet with the Faford Company on the site uh, to come up with a game plan uh, to make to to get into the basin. That is obviously over uh, that has not been maintained over its lifespan uh, to get in there to clean that basin up, and I think that is being done uh, through conservation and the Faford Company. Uh, but that is the number one issue indoor item on the two thousand and fifteen checklist. And one of the comments from G C G is uh, within our peer review, is to make sure that that basin is cleaned up and uh, is working sufficiently. And so, um, the Faford Company is working to do that uh, preemptively. Um, uh, as it needs to be done.
And and Peter, just to clarify, that's within the development itself, right?
That is within the development itself, yeah, it's um, if you pull on the Queen Isabella from Chestnut Street, uh, it would be on your left, excuse me, your left hand side, but it's a detention basin. Uh, and it's been, it's overgrown, right? It's filled with sediment fines, right? They've obviously settled to the bottom. Uh, there's invasives filled, you know, with invasive plant material and matter. Uh, and so that basin needs to be cleaned up and rebuilt, uh, resurfaced, um, and rebuilt to make sure it's a functioning property, you know, and I think uh, over time and and to and I'll and I'll say this, obviously with with the 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 basin development team, is that the condo association, once the Faford Company hands over ownership and 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 maintenance, um, to not just the base dome, but to the existing village of America's condo facility. Um, that basin needs annual maintenance. It needs to be mowed, it needs to be cleaned out. Um, catch basins need to be vacuumed out. Um, and uh, and if things do not get maintained over a number of years, obviously, it it the issues can compound upon itself into the situation that that basin is now, is it filled with invasive plant matter, uh, and it's not functioning correctly. But but uh, but the Faford Company is on their their way to working with us and their D P W and our Conservation Commission and with G C G through the planning board and and obviously through the planning board and basin development to to get that basin uh, correct and functional once again.
Thanks, Peter. It's it's our intention, once Faford does the work and they're gone, to make sure that we are a member of the Infrastructure Committee uh, of that whole development, because we want to make sure that the O N M is followed correctly in an annual basis, so we don't get situations like this.
Just to clarify, there is an Infrastructure Committee that's made up of members from each of the HOAs, because it's like six or seven HOAs in that neighborhood. And they're in charge of the infrastructure and obviously there was some disconnect between who is supposed to maintain that Faford at the time, because he still owned it, or the infrastructure HOA. Um, we will be becoming members of the HOA and the infrastructure when we purchase this property, and we'll be on that board and one of the proponents of making sure that the whole committee keeps it maintained the way it should be. It's easier to maintain it each year than wait seven years and have to do a huge, you know, huge job later.
Definitely.
So just just as I think we've gone through everything, I just wanted to confirm with Peter, as far as complete streets. As far as I recall, we have complete streets in that little area, right? There's nothing that we need to worry about as a planning board as far as lack of sidewalks.
The no, we have, we have, we have raised granite curb sidewalks, uh, running all the way from the Village of Americas, um, down Chestnut Street to the intersection of Union Street. Then obviously they are, um, there's vertical granite curb sidewalks all the way from uh, Union Street, um, up to downtown. Uh, and then connecting, you know, connecting from that point on. So we do have uh, sidewalks, pedestrian orientation, pedestrian sidewalks, uh, a- along the roadway that.
And part of that, part of that is going down, part of that is going down to the cemetery where that connection will be made uh, as part of the trails, is that right?
Correct.
That's kind of part of it.
I mean, with the, yes, that is a hundred percent part of it. Yep.
Yeah.
So I think Trish went through all of the of Matt's letter and the the checklist, so to speak. Um, I don't know if other members of the board have other points on sustainability that they want to add.
I wanted to go back actually, um, to uh, just so we can check this off my list that I am looking at. Um, and at our last meeting, um, uh, I think Roy had mentioned putting money into an into an escrow account for the purpose of repaving the area between Chestnut and Queen Isabella. And that's what's being done right now, is that?
That won't be necessary now, because that's been completed.
Got it. I I actually drove by there yesterday, was shocked, took a few pictures, sent it to Peter, and I'm like, what's what's happening here? Because uh, yeah, I was I was going in, I was going into the area and just used the other entrance, but.
It's how you say that. When I called Faford today, I said, do you have any idea when you're gonna be paving it? They said it's almost done.
Yeah.
Out there to verify, and we were very pleasantly surprised.
I was shocked, because it was quite far along before I, right, before I saw it, so. Um, okay, I just wanted to cross that off the list, but as to Anna's question, does anyone else on the committee have any other comments in regard to sustainability? I think what's remaining on the list is to look a little bit more at the E V and how easy it is to put some conduit in there. Um, you know, how how can we maximize our potential there? But any anyone else have um?
Um, I have said, I guess it's somewhat related, also related to the bylaw. Um, in the section under the Wildwood, it talks about being a walkable and bikeable way, so um, I heard someone mention about the the um, Upper Charles Trail. We know that's still in development in town and is um, I have not kept up with like proposed routes, but is that um, going near or through this development and how is that handled?
If I go to the chair, respond to that.
Please.
Todd and I met with the Trails Committee on site, or maybe a month, month or two ago. And we walked where the trails are gonna be potentially going. And the trails don't go through our site, but they do go, if you walk from our site down toward the cemetery and you look across the street, there's a large piece of land across the street, which they're trying to work on getting easements across that property, and then the trail going across and through the cemetery and c- continue on down to where the new uh, police and fire station is. So it really isn't on our property, but it's adjacent to us.
I I think the final, the exact trail path is still being determined. Uh, they're they're working through that. Again, as Roy mentioned with easements, and um, the Upper Trails, Charles Trails Committee is still in the process of figuring that all out.
The property that you have, though, wouldn't be helpful to have a trail easement on.
No, it's not where they want to be.
I'm work, I'm I'm working with them a little bit too. I've seen the maps and I agree, obviously, I think part of that was the 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 uh, the the donation to to help with that uh, with the easements and and to get this trail moving, you know, along is is obviously that has been a priority of the the Upper Charles Trail Committee.
Can we talk a little bit about that as far as the money? So I noticed a hundred and twenty five thousand going to the community, to the associations, and I I think that's, that shows a certain kind of um, commitment, if you will, to the community, and I appreciate it, but it is helpful for me to understand a little more, because when I look at the twenty five thousand for the um, the Upper Charles trail versus a hundred and twenty five for for the community itself, I I'm wondering how the, you know, where we're at as far as kind of the um, the assistance to the community. So can you tell us a little bit more about the one hundred and twenty five thousand and what is, what is it meant for?
It's actually a hundred and fifty thousand.
Uh, I'll address that if I may, to the chair.
Please.
The the hundred and fifty is something we discussed early on with the neighborhood. Um, we we had many community meetings with them. There was discussions of we would like a playground, we would like uh, this um, extra lighting on the roadways, we'd like this, that, a bunch of i- ideas, and and also, I think we we kind of talked about it in some of our early meetings last year. Um, and instead of us saying, all right, we'll give this money for this particular item or that item, we're gonna let the community decide, and and all these things are 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 not inexpensive, the items they were talking about. We want to be really kind of supportive and and making sure that they could do what they want. And so we, through negotiation, ca- came up with that amount of money. Um, and I think one of the things that the board, early on, is kind of really uh, mentioned was that getting the community support and and giving something back to the surrounding community was an important thing. And uh, with with the condo associations next door, so that's, that's how we really tried to address it, and they couldn't really decide on any whether they want a swimming pool or a playground, so that's where we kind of came up with the we'll give you money, would let you determine you the best way to use it.
So, so kind of here's where I'm at, and I don't know where the rest of the board is at. I I applaud that. I think it's a great intention is absolutely spot on. How do we work with the community for their benefit? Where I have some concerns is we as a planning board are approving this project, right? Or we're being asked to evaluate, and we're being told, listen, there's this pie of money that's gonna go to the community to do with what they want. That pie of money means money's being taken away from other things, right? Whether it's more more E V parking stations or lead certification or whatever it is. And so I I do, I do want as a board to be a little bit more precise, that if we're gonna if we're gonna approve this and there's a hundred and fifty thousand going to the community that we specified that it is for those infrastructure items, the playgrounds type of things, we define it. I I don't want that money to just kind of disappear into thin air. I I want it to be very specific that it's meant for those types of infrastructure benefits to the whole community.
I can, I mean, I can, I can see that. I don't want to get too specific about it, because I am not gonna pretend I know the needs of that community. Um, but I think it's, it makes sense that it's about you know, things that actually improve the outdoor connection, I guess, say, of that community. Um, because that's, that falls within the realm of the planning board, that, you know, anything that about connectivity, connectivity between between that community and this community, between the area, um, so certain things would not fall under that. For for instance, providing solar panels for other buildings would, in my mind, would not fall under that. That's not about community connectivity, right? Versus, like you said, playground sidewalks, lighting, things that are.
I I I I just want to make sure we don't make this kind of a a slush fund, hey, support us, here you go, here's some money, do what you want. I think we need to make this more of a specific, community focused fund.
We we agree with that. When we met with them, this money is not meant to, gee, we don't have to pay our HOA fees anymore, because we've got all this money, we can just dip into it. That is not the intent.
Right.
But when we, because that would be the wrong reasoning. When we met with the Infrastructure Committee and we talked to various members, there's a number of needs that they have. One is they don't feel they have sufficient lighting. Some people think they need a playground, some people think they need other things. And we didn't want to get in the middle of telling them what they need. We felt that that was out of place. So we felt if we offered to give them the money, we're gonna become part of that infrastructure if we get this project approved, and you know, we're gonna have some say in working with the community, what it's for, so we don't expect it to go for some frivolous thing.
And I and I'm not implying that anybody's gonna do it frivolously. I'm just saying that we as a planning board are making choices about where the money goes, right? And you're saying to us, hey, twenty five thousand goes to the trails, which is a community thing. One fifty is going to this, lead certification is too expensive. We're we're making choices as to how the pie is gonna get so all I'm saying is let's put some, let's put some boundaries around that, so that we.
I think we have a general understanding about that, so. Do you add to that discussion?
I was gonna say, we didn't intend to really make any of these payments, it's just something that's been asked and looked forward to, so that, you know, the pie is bigger than we ever anticipated. It is. It's uh, you know, grown over time, so it's it's.
As an example, we had no intention of ever doing a a bus shelter. Now, all of a sudden, we get a forty thousand dollar line on it, we had no idea what we were gonna have to do.
Understood, but when you read what the Wildwood District's in there, if you were thinking that you could just stay within your little property line, that was probably a little naive as well, so.
I I understand that.
Okay. That's it. I would like, Anna, do you have, do you have a wrap up on what you're looking for? To the other members of the board?
Absolutely. I just wanted to comment that I appreciate Roy's flexibility on this project, and I understand he's stepping into the shoes of a prior um, partner that maybe was not as as flexible, so just wanted to say that.
I'm I'm not sure any of the other, if Kevin Deepa, Marcelo, Kate, if anyone has a topic they want to jump into. I know Kevin sent an email shortly this afternoon, which I haven't had you wanted to address or questions you wanted to ask now, Kevin?
Well, one of them, one thing I had was the detention pond, so um, I guess for Peter, really kind of clarify that there is somebody from the town who, or from the Concom, who who from the town owns that? Somebody will be maintaining it. I I I just learned a a lot about these things last week, because I'm handling a few of them at work. And uh, I I now know that these invasives are a pain in the butt to deal with and need to be retreated year after year. So I just, is somebody from the town, you know, responsible to look after that, so that we don't have to worry about it being a problem in the future?
Yeah, we have it. So our D P W has, actually, we actually have a a stormwater kind of team, you know, and that's kind of made up of our conservation agent. Um, it's made up of our town engineer, the um, stormwater coordinator, Kevin Myamah, uh, which kind of falls in his periphery and uh, and Kevin and, you know, the D P W guys and our conservation agent Becker are kind of the ones that are, you know, their boots on the ground, looking at this, you know, that that basins are maintained, right? And I think um, I think on an annual basis, we could, we could say that, um, you know, you know, in in managing the O N M plan, that the 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 condo association will um, submit, you know, up, you know, submit, where all, you know, summary of all completed work in a timely manner. Uh, but typically, to answer your question is yes, the town does have a stormwater team, and and that was put in place to um to really come to bring stormwater up to par within the states, um, um. It's a M S four permit, right? And and so, which is more of a conservation window for to make sure that stormwater is dealt with properly, and it dealt with properly on site, and that's being uh, infiltrated back into the same ground area that it that it naturally would kind of infiltrate through, so. Um, does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I just wanted to be sure the town town's checking on them, and then I guess at that point, it's HOA for any follow up, the town.
We have a list, we have projects, obviously, we have the HO, we have O N M plans, um, this is all it's new, but it's 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 starting to grow, and obviously, we do have um, staff working on it, you know, putting, you know, staff working on it and checking it through.
Peter, can I add one thing? So this is also in the order of conditions, I believe, when that was built, so the Concom would have some enforcement uh, ability as well uh, to to put that on the condo association as the owner of the entire, all the HOAs, to make sure that work is done.
That's a good point, you know, that's a good point. Uh, so also, as addition to, you know, answer Kevin's question is planning board doesn't permit this, so in Ashland, there's a stormwater permit, right? And so all applicants that go through the site plan with the planning board, then have to go to conservation. Even if they do not trigger conservation review, it's a conservation for a stormwater review, right? All of our G C G reports are there, shifted over to conservation, they're used again um, to make sure that that infiltration is hap- the infiltration is happening. And so the Conservation Commission is the stormwatering, is is the permitting authority for all sto- for stormwater matters in Ashland. So what that says is, yes, the conservation agent does have jurisdiction and enforcement, which is great, because as a town planner, I have no jurisdiction. Uh, you know, I'm a, I I I cannot write tickets, I cannot write enforcement orders. That power comes by either the building commissioner and or the conservation agent and or the health agent. And so that's kind of that separation of power. So in this instance, the conservation agent does have enforcement powers and can enforce those through that as a whole.
I'm just curious, so um, we've talked a lot about, obviously, the surface runoff, but we've never ever talked about the rainwater harvesting in. But we've never ever talked about the rainwater harvesting in this project because. Unlike other projects, this has got a massive amount of flat roof and there's going to be a lot of rainwater and. Tell me if I missed it, but there were no plans in your sustainable strategies for rainwater harvesting, correct?
I do not believe we have rainwater harvesting this project, but I would ask the applicant to step forward to.
Oh, so we are infiltrating our our roof water in into the ground, but no, it is not a rain. There is no, I don't be mad unless I'm incorrect. There is a rain.
No. No, we're not currently doing any rainwater harvesting.
Would that not be of interest to the town because the amount of water that is getting into the drain. From this site, would the treatment of that water not be a concern to the town at all?
It is, it is being treated. Uh, we we are infiltrating it into the ground. It's just not. Um, so that water is taken and it's put into a a stormwater system we're putting underground. And then it goes into the ground from there and it in it infiltrates back into the ground through that and it's clean that way.
You're not tying it into your landscape uh plans to reuse that water.
Uh, we are not.
No.
Is that uh something that Deepa you could see working here based on your experience as a designer?
It looks like a good project for it, right? This has so much of flat roof. Uh, solar may happen. Not immediately, obviously, but there's so much flat roof in this scenario and there's you're going to drain all that rainwater every year. A rainwater quality is changing and it feels like such a waste of to just. Not reuse it for the amount of landscaping that you have on the site, but.
Is that related to the pond issue or could that help?
Well, we're actually, we're putting it onto the parking lots in a cul-de-sac drainage system, which then percolates eventually into the soil. The problem with trying to rely on it for irrigation, because we we've done lots of irrigation, is there's no consistency to the amount of water that's ever available. This was a perfect year. You know, your your irrigation system wouldn't have had water because. Number one, we haven't had rain and there's not a consistent amount of water to consistently run an irrigation system.
I think it's also about alternatively what is mentioned in the um. You know, the sustainability document, again, it's about using, oh, and Kathy's on, which maybe she has something to say about this, but is using um um. You know, plants that can handle droughts, native species, um, not using grass, using ground cover so that you're kind of eliminating a lot of the things that irrigation. Is typically used for because the plants define without it, like if you just don't have an irrigation system. Right? So which which is more the point, just to use the rainwater that's there and not have to use plants that require supplemental water. Um. Kathy, did you want to weigh in on that?
Uh, yes, thank you. And I'm gonna um echo what you and Deepa have said, um, which is. All the plants everywhere right now, they look fried, except for the fact we just got three inches of rain or two to three, somewhere in there. Um. But the ones that look best are generally the ones that are are best suited to this region and and the bulk of those plants. Probably ninety, I'll say eighty to ninety percent of them are the native plants. They just will withstand those conditions better. And so all plants, just like all of us, need water to survive and to. Get established. But once they're past that establishment phase, the amount of irrigation that you need. For them is infinitely less. If all these plantings were done as green infrastructure instead of. Flush with the tops of curbs, but. Below the level four to six inches with curb cuts, that's called green infrastructure and that takes parking lot water, for instance, or rainwater. From roofs and can use it and helps hold that water. It goes through the aquifers and the soils. Pull out the pollutants. The trash gets stuck on top and somebody doing maintenance just comes along and takes out the trash and it's a win-win-win. Volume two, chapter two, Mass Stormwater Manual, has all the um specs for doing green infrastructure and it's a a state. Approved and encouraged way to um create a combination of. More green stormwater infrastructure, more beauty, more aesthetics. It's like you're stacking your functions on the same site, doing those things. So I I I've been asking. All the developers, when they come through design review, to do stuff like this. And it's hard uh quickly to try to do this. And we're also working potentially on bringing some speakers into town and sustainability, we'll have more on that. In the near future, because this is really important and really necessary to move us. Into the twenty, the century we're in right now, let alone the future.
So in in terms of this project, I mean, I think it might be, it would be interesting for your landscape architect to see. What small um measures might be taken to make sure that the plants you're putting in are kind of self-care, which is what.
There are no, there are no plants that are self-care, especially when you initially plant them.
I agreed, agreed. As as Kathy said, they need to get established, but um.
Certain plants are obviously depending on shade conditions, sun conditions, soil conditions. You know, one of the concerns for watering plants is having the ability to water them when they need it, meaning. Very hot periods of time, drought periods of time. The last thing you want to do is be watering things that already have soggy soil.
Right.
So to being able to control when things get waters are important. You know, we've we've spent a lot of time with the Design Review Committee and with the Planning Board revising our planting plan, I think, two or three times. To a point now, I believe, we're at seventy-five percent native plus uh native plant material and we've added a lot of. Uh, changes in the species per discussions with Catherine as well.
Yeah, um, to me, that's that seems to be, gets you a long way.
We appreciate that.
So, um, because obviously these aren't, these aren't places where no one's playing croquet on the lawn here, right? It's not that, it's not that type of greenery that we're looking for.
Yeah.
So as it's upstairs, kind of like the corner spot as well, you know, that doesn't get any supplemental water, so.
So Tricia, just to add, I'm sorry, one more thing. Lawn is the worst water hog on the planet.
So I don't think we have any lawn. Is that, is is there lawn?
There's not, there's not a lot of it, but yes, I mean, there is some and and we kind of, we've gone through that. We've talked about uh. The other turf that Catherine's thinking of and it's just for for where we're having it and where we're we're using it, we're we're going with uh regular turf. And, you know, we we think that's, you know, it looks nice and with the presentation of where you're going in and out of buildings, it is, it is nice to have it in in spaces.
So is that um. Don't have it in front of me. Is that part of the inner part where the kind of which is the backyard for these residents or is it? In places where people aren't actually.
That area.
Yeah, I I think I think it's just looking like that. I can, I can see lawns um. In places where people might actually use them, walk across them, sit on them, read a book, you know, things like that. Um, I have no problem with that whatsoever. In areas where we're just kind of walking by and looking at it, then it another, something else might be better to prevent the need to to water it for no reason. So that's, that's my personal opinion of it. So and it's just as part of the kind of looking, I think of um kind of the the ninety-nine percent look at the drawings. It's it's. It's um, you know, having the uh, having the landscape architect. Look at it again, how these, as we down to these minute questions to see if we can push it just a little bit.
All clear. What is it with Brian and Bush?
I I I think the landscape architect approved everything. It's just a saying is, you know, obviously, it's the planning board has the final approval. On on what's put in.
Yeah, it's just, it's just looking at, it it's just looking at the um. Um, if 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 this continues to be something that comes up either from the Design Review Committee or. From the Planning Board through the Sustainability Committee, is kind of not interested in lawns because lawns require water, you know? Then it's 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 about making your landscape architect say, hey, they're really not into this. Can we really minimize? Can we put the lawn only where people are going to sit on it and or possibility of them sitting on it and using it versus something else? I think that, I think that's, I think that's the question about trying to find a middle ground between no lawn whatsoever and. Hey, are we really being smart that putting it? Only where we really need it. That that's all I'm saying. I don't think it's a big deal.
I appreciate that. I I think we we, as the plan is now, we really don't have a lot of lawn.
I don't think so, but.
Yeah.
You know, we'll take a, we'll take a very quick look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, and it's also kind of that point that you had where you're saying you're kind of reducing the heat island effects. That's. Those are the locations that you're referring to, probably should be paid attention to because those are where you're going to have some grass. To kind of maintain over a long term because obviously it's not a lot on the parking lot. So the heat island effect that you have as one of your. Sustainable strategies probably is something that you want to review with your landscape architect.
Thank you.
All right, um, Kevin, anything else on your list that you wanted to talk about? I think some things were checked off in the previous discussion. I do have it printed out in front of me.
The the ego grass there was another one and and just. The only thing I would add is that in the three years I've lived in town this time of year, you're not allowed to water your grass, not even hand water. So, you know, if. If you can plant anything that won't be brown like all of ours is, you know, would be recommended. Um, solar ready was, you know, another one and I had been thinking about, you know, could there be a timeframe to have the solar on? So I appreciate that. Offer there. Um. The other one I had was the parking lot. Um, we, there are some empty parking spaces here and I know you've talked about, you know, you would. Look at how parking goes in the future and possibly control it with limiting or or handing out extra parking passes, but. If we could maybe say that, you you know, a year after full occupancy, you conduct a parking study and and. See if you could either bank more parking spaces or if you needed to unbank some of the spots that are there. Um, you know, if we, an empty parking lot adds more green, if there's need for more parking, go the other way.
I don't think we're banking any spots. We're we're building. Go ahead, Roy.
I I know one time we talked about eliminating some. We prefer not to eliminate them because I think if we do, then. We want to have more than enough parking and we're thoroughly convinced we have more than enough parking. For some reason, after a year, it looks like, gee, it's getting tight for parking. We suggested we would go to a sticker system where you either have to have a sticker to have your car parked there overnight. Or if you have a guest that's staying overnight, you gotta go to the leasing office and get a guest sticker. This will eliminate random parking on the site. We don't think we need to go there, but that would be an option.
Because the special permit you're approv- you are applying for actually is due to a request for reduced parking. Is that right?
Yeah, yes. Probably aren't banking them.
Right.
Yeah, it's the unique feature of this site is it's calling for two parking spaces per unit, which. Is very unusual. I know it's in Ashland. Matter of fact, I think some of your other sites in town are maybe one and a half parking spaces. Which typical is between one-four and one-seven. I mean, that's pretty typical. So I think two is in excess. But at the same time, we have less two-bedroom units. We have more one-bedroom units than we have two, which again requires less parking. So. We're thoroughly convinced we have more than adequate parking.
Yeah, so I guess what I was thinking was that if there is, you know, a year into occupancy, far more than adequate parking. Could we look at a few more trees instead of empty parking spaces? It's just.
Ripping out asphalt.
Right, right.
Oh, we we we'd consider doing that if if the board wanted us to.
I mean, I I think, Kevin, this is where I was going the last meeting we had and I I didn't quite make my point as strongly as you just did. I I I most of not, you know, we want to. The bylaw here envisions a walking neighborhood. So me personally, I'm more than comfortable with less parking spaces and and. More walkability. That's why we're talking about complete streets and trails and bike racks and. You know, we're we're trying to make this a walkable place where where people can walk to town. They can, they can get around. They can go to the Starbucks that's moving in. I'm just kidding. Um, so we want walkability, right? Um, and um, so I I personally want to see less parking, not more. More open space for all of that rainwater that's not irrigated.
I do see, starting with, you know, what's what's there now, which is hopefully more than enough because, you know, the worst problem is that there's not enough parking and. Well, from this building are now parking on the street in front of their neighbor's house and.
That's not going to be allowed to happen. Uh, I think one of you brought up an interesting idea is that after the, after a year of occupancy, if we have excess parking. You know, we could consider taking out, pick a number of five, ten parking spaces and making it landscaping. Or making it a terrace or whatever the case may be.
I think that's great.
Yeah, I think um. I think as long as that's, that potentially could be something we can look at in a certain number of time. We have to be careful about. I think in terms of um Town Council's recommendation that for this. Um, special permit, that the number of parking spaces is firm and then. That's something that is looked at in the future and I guess maybe, I'm not. That would require coming back before the planning board to require another reduction um of. Yeah, yeah, a further reduction under the special permit.
I would just say, speaking to this, I know Lisa weighed into this one and obviously parking is uh. The hot topic. Uh, but if we can draft the condition, you know, like I I assume obviously if it was acceptable by the applicant. That, you know, any reduction of between ten and fifteen spaces would be allowed.
That's a good alternative. That way you'd be already pre-approved.
We'd be, we'd be almost like preapproving them for reduction of parking after one-year study. Obviously, the study would be submitted to the planning office and be. Sent out to the planning board, but there'd be no form of public hearings. I would almost be kind of. Pre-approval underway to reduce anywhere between ten to fifteen parking, you know. Um, I would say fifteen or less parking spaces um. Or or whatever that number lands, twelve, whatever it's going to be, it's comfortable with. Um, and then to just to kind of move it forward to get over that, to get over this. Point.
Does that kind of fit your thought on that, Kevin?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It would work out logistically like that and be a condition that sounds great.
It's almost like a testing ground to.
Right.
For this type of project is like, well, what is really needed? What, you know, how do we find those new data points?
It's, it and and not to. A little of point, maybe it's for the planning board because obviously, yes, we are requiring two spaces per unit. And maybe that is a little bit in excess, right? Maybe the real number should be between one-four and one-four-seven percent. Are we high? Is it time for us to revise our bylaws? Maybe this is using the test case. So I just thought to make that note.
Okay, I think um, Kevin, is there anything else on your list that? You you mentioned the dog park and bus stop, that we need to make sure we have adequate representation of those in the drawing set. Um.
Yeah, yeah. Um, I had also noticed the new pavement going and I just. Hopeful that we're not making any utility connections under that new pavement.
I'm glad you asked that question. The first thing I did is call our engineer today and he said, Roy, we have the storm drains in place. Conduits are in place. The electricity is coming off the utility pole underground. The gas lines are tapped inside the sidewalk, so we don't have to cut into Chestnut or Queen Isabella.
Perfect. Peter, do we have a rule? Just, I was curious. Do we have a rule, like I know some towns do, where if you cut into asphalt, it's. Less than X amount of years, you own mill and pave, not just a tent patch?
Uh, I I believe so. They got to check with GPW. I think it's three, I think it's three, three years or five years.
Okay.
I've been talking about it a lot in Mass DOT. I know DOT is five years.
Yeah.
When they roll through. So um, I think the town actually does. And then it's it's obviously a proven GPW.
Okay, uh, Kevin, anything else before I start bothering someone else?
Nope. Thanks.
Marcelo, Deepa, Kate, are there things that are rising to the top of your list that you want to talk about? Marcelo, Deepa, Kate, are there things that are rising to the top of your list that you want to talk about at this meeting? Or information that you don't have yet that you want to make sure gets followed through on?
Um, I think so. The stuff on your list was pretty much everything I would have. One of the things I think we're still working to get information from the town is about um. Total water, you know, water um. Availability through like our DEP permit. I know that the um the water pressure seems reasonably taken care of, but I think we need a. Condition about that because the report was not final, like how it was handled. Um. I'm sure Peter's been checking into this, but like just are there any infrastructure upgrades for water and sewer? And then the sewer capacity. And then I believe it's also um specifically in the wildwood to have a uh. Impact on services. It specifically mentions the school. So I think. Um, we did get uh email through the chair from the superintendent. And it looks like that really almost any development. It's having children is going to have a very big impact on schools. So I think we should at least make sure that's.
So I will tell you that um. We're we're continuing to work on the water and sewer and the flows from a town perspective. Um, the Fafford company did already pay uh for uh upgrades to Chestnut Street Station 20 years ago. Uh, for this development and for this site. Uh, and so we do kind of checking that box. Uh, we do have water and obviously I am working to confirm uh sewer flow um with our consultant uh as we speak. Um, and and going from there. I don't have a response on the uh stu the school and or that email from the superintendent. Um, but yeah, so obviously any any development of this instance is going to have some some children involved. And so. Um, I don't, Tricia, do you want to take that or?
Uh, through the chair, if I could comment on that.
Sure.
Um, my understanding was if there were money spent and upgrades made years ago by Fafford. That allowed for the sewer capacity for this entire project and that included the water as well. Are you aware of that?
I oh, I agree. I, you know, water was was. You know, and I believe we have plenty, we have water for the site. Um, but um, but it's my understanding that, yes, that that when this development went in. Um, those dramatics began, there were significant things. Uh, upgrades made to Chestnut Street and the Chestnut Street Water Pump Station.
Yes.
So it sounds like the infrastructure issue is mostly settled, maybe a pressure. Um, we'd need some kind of condition based on that report. And then I think just as the overall utilities. Um, the DEP permit, I guess, I I think we, everybody's pretty sensitive about water, right? Given. So the state of the world, never mind Ashland. So the DEP permit that allows us to withdraw. So much water is based on what amount of population. And I just want to know when we're increasing population, is that taken in consideration? Under that permit or do we have to look at that? So let's say the permit allowed eighteen thousand people projected, but we're really going to hit nineteen. Um, so I think we have to kind of look at that and make sure that that's. Covered by the permit, the amount of water.
Peter, is that question same compared to you?
Are you speaking about the inner basin transfers?
Yes.
I'm gonna have to put that on on hold and and reach out to Greg Eldredge about that. I mean, because. I don't want to make up an answer and I don't have an answer for each note. Um, and so I'm happy to reach out to Greg Eldredge.
And he is our.
He's our water and sewer consultant that works for the town for paleo and wood.
And then, did you say that? So the infrastructure is in good shape and we have enough, but um the sewer capacity. Is um not an issue or is that also need to be looked into?
Um, removing this project, I am working with Greg Eldredge, water sewer consultant. And the DPW to get to get the planning board a better picture of townwide capacity. Uh, and uh our agreements that were sent, you know, in relationship to the agreement, the intermissive agreement with the town of Raymondian. That 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 paint the picture for everybody from the planning board. Um, are there these stand capacity, the flow of capacity levels and limits um for everybody?
Cause if if I'm understanding this right, Kate's questions are twofold, are two parts.
They're two part, yes.
One is if the is if the physical in infrastructure, the things you can touch, right? Are adequate to deal with this project, right? Physical things, the pipes, the 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 pumps. You know, the things that you can touch and feel. The other part of it is capacity in terms of money, in terms of allowance, in terms of. Things that you can't you can't touch, but are in terms of what we're allowed to use, the price for those items and how those might affect. Ashland as a whole. Am I summarizing that right, Kate?
Um, pretty much the money. I think the the water permit isn't specifically money unless. Because we aren't allowed, then we have to use the supplemental MWRA and then it definitely isn't money issue.
Right, right. So that that's part of that ephemeral stuff, right?
If I could through the chip, that sounds like a Ashland global issue. I know that, as I had mentioned before, when Fafford did upgrades to the sewer and water systems. That was for the allocation of water and sewer for this particular project. Again, I I have no knowledge about the town as a whole, but I know that there is sufficient capacity for this particular project.
Yep, those are just things that we want to understand as a board, so. And I don't think it's only about this project, but understanding those in general for future projects as well. So.
Okay.
Okay. Um. Anything else, Kate? I do think we should try to wrap this up about about 10 o'clock. Um, because obviously we're not finishing tonight again. Um, I don't think anyone expected that. But as we get tired, we become more inefficient. Um, but I did want to ask it. If if Kate has any more questions, Marcelo, Deepa. Anything that we wanted to make sure we take care of tonight? And then. Okay, please. Oh, you said you're all set or do you have something?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Um, Anna, do you have anything else that you wanted to?
I just wanted to say, I know we want to start writing the decision. Uh, I did start looking at the draft. I I did take some notes. From the sustainability stuff we did today and I sent Peter and Tricia the high level summary of what we seem to have. Gotten as far as the discussion with the applicant where we could compromise. So to the extent it's helpful to make progress on the written decision, you know, maybe we can take those points and start to implement them into the draft.
Yeah.
That we we see some progress in the draft. Um, and then the only suggestion I had is I think we have a very nice thorough list from DRC to go through. Um, I don't know, you know, when we want to start that, but I I feel like if we cover those items, we're going to cover the majority.
I think I think many of those items have been covered, but I was also going to suggest that if they don't have it already, and I suspect that they do. But the the second round of the designer review committee notes be sent to the applicant and if you could go through it the same way you went through the GCG. You know, report, we. Um, it has a whole range of things. Some of it's about um. Um, uh native plants. We've already covered that, but kind of the same way you went through GCG, just say, yep, we've covered this. We talked about the amount of wood on the building, but you know, there's it's it's those kind of points. And I think if. If um, I believe that document has already been sent to you. It's not new, but it can be resent, right?
Oh, we 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 have it. We, I know what you're looking for. We can do that.
Yeah, I just thought it would make it very clear that you. Obviously have, you've seen these items, you've addressed them or made a point about how it's not applicable or whatever. It's just like.
Discuss them with the planning board.
E- exactly. Is that is that something you can do and make clear for us?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so like I said, I think most of it is, I think the majority of it we have talked about. Um, but that would be for us to go through it easily. And I I I agree with you, Anna, that this is a point where Peter. Why don't you weigh in on the best process of this? That we have a special permit and we have a site plan review. Both of them have different uh criteria, which. Then involve different findings. So for each criteria. We have our findings that say we thought about this issue and this is this is what we say about it. And so what Peter is the best way to kind of go about this? I think people. Anna, sounds like maybe, tell me if I'm wrong, that there are things that you would like to send some text to Peter about, like I want this included in this finding.
Yeah, I mean, I just, what I did is I kind of took notes on what Ray and Todd, the applicant is willing to do. Like the solar thing that we seem to have consensus on. If 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 Ray is going to do it and and we seem to be interested in it, there it is. So I just made notes on the seven items or whatever that seem to be consensus items to throw into a draft for discussion. I feel like it's that way we move forward in the drafting a little bit.
So I'm, I was gonna say, would it, I'm sorry to cut you off, Peter, but would it make sense for you to send us a draft?
Of the five.
I I have your draft here somewhere. But that puts in um. Kind of blank spaces for each criteria, each condition. I'm trying to remem remember if it's already in there.
It's not, you know, we had the findings, the findings are in there. Um, obviously I was waiting tonight, obviously to discuss. However, I think I can uh. I can read the tea leaves from my discussion and to start to take the first pass. Uh, obviously we organized the decision, we've put together, you know, item itemized list of the most relevant documents pertaining to this. Um, we put in, you know, the number, you know, the the one thing that we kind of. Did do was pile in the special conditions from the O seven uh and I can continue the O seven decision. Um, into the relevant ones. And then obviously we. Already built in some of the other credential conditions on top of our kind of boilerplate conditions as well. So. With the findings, I think I I I'm at a point where I think I can start drafting the findings up. You know, just being present at the planning board's last, obviously every meeting. Um, and then I can kind of send those out to the board. Does that make the best sense?
Yeah, I mean, I think I I see right now, at least on the, you only sent out the special permit draft. Is that right?
I did, I did, yep.
So under the special permit draft, people can see, right? What Peter has is he has listed the sex six conditions, the six criteria for the special permit, right? For the site and review, there's more. There's like twelve, thirteen, okay? But then he didn't put anything after it. He just says, community needs served by the proposal finding and it's blank, right? Peter can start to fill in those things based on our discussion and what he's heard. And we can also start to send our own notes to him. Um, a about these things, impacts on the natural environment. So if I have thoughts about that and Anna has thoughts about that. We can fill it in, send our document back to Peter and he has material to work from in order to write up that finding. So there'd be one for the special permit, which is that has six criteria and one for the site plan review, which has thirteen criteria. But if we give him our notes, anyone that has the. Time and mental capacity to do so, it gives him a starting point. And then, of course, we will all be reviewing it again and again to get.
No, I think that makes a lot of sense and I I think we should also take ownership for the things we bring up. So for example, Kevin, you brought up the the parking thing, right? So I sent Peter like a very loose concept of how to phrase it. But maybe you could put it into your own words. Like I I feel like we should each take responsibility for the item that we're. Throwing to the board and give give Peter some language.
Um, you know what? I think the best, thank you, Anna. I agree and I really appreciate it, but I think um. I'm gonna put together two word documents, one with the special permit, one with the site plan, with the criteria. And the findings listed below. And then I can kind of send that out and then to everybody. And then it's every, and I think it'd be great if anyone could take responsibility of a certain topic. And then send send ideas back to me and then I can compile everything. Then obviously I'll start to fill out, I I'll start to draft the language for each of these things and then. Once I get more more input, I can kind of compile it together.
Yeah, it's it's a lot of writing and if we can help Peter not have to jog his memory about what we actually said. But instead of get instead, give him at least some of those language or key phrases that would help him fill in the blanks a little easier.
And I'm happy to, obviously, typically, um, I have many examples and I can kind of cruise through this, so. It's not that uh, it's a a huge heavy lift, but I think it's just a, it's good to obviously, yes, to to have ownership and. Obviously, this is your decision. It's the planning's decision. So I think it's great to have that uh that public ownership and input.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Any questions from the applicant before?
Uh, I I think the idea of you all getting your comments to to Peter is very helpful. And then hopefully Peter can share a draft with us just to make sure we understand where where you're going. Uh, I guess what I'm hoping is, I'm hoping can meet with you in two weeks. And I'm hoping you can have a decision, hopefully can close the hearing at that meeting. Is is that realistic?
I don't know at this point. We have a lot on our plate and I would not obligate the planning board to. Rush through where we are when this public hearing is one of three major ones that we have going on right now. And multiple little ones, so um. I'm, I I think it's a great thing to shoot for because I think we need to. This project is the furthest along of all of them and we have to start uh making some real decisions. Uh, I I definitely agree with that, but um. I'm not willing to put a guarantee on on anything at this time.
Okay, well, hopefully if you can try and shoot for it, that would be good.
I think we'd all like to. Make some serious progress moving forward um. With with this one, we've put a lot of work into it, so.
Well, we appreciate that. Thank you.
And can I just say I'm thrilled by this solar, the solar progress? I think that's really exciting for Ashland.
Thank you.
All right, on that note. Peter, when, so when are we looking at?
Uh, two things. Obviously, if we want to put this on the planning board agenda for the 22nd, I think we can move it to the 22nd. I think if we want to say we can do a 20 minute, 15 minute update. 10 minutes update, right? And obviously at that point, I hopefully have. A better draft of the findings. I can note that. I think that may allow Daystone Development to put something together. In response to the DRC second comment letter. We can take that into consideration. And then obviously we can kind of move it back out to the to the to the meeting on on October 8th. I think maybe at that point we can, and then I think that's the maybe we should shoot for is October 8th. Excuse me. I keep on saying October 8th, but for some reason I think it's the 13th. I'm sorry. It's the.
I think it's a sixth theater.
It's the 13th, excuse me. And I do want to note that I believe that's a holiday. Is that?
You believe it's a holiday?
I don't think it's a holiday, Peter. The 13th is not Columbus Day is the 10th.
I I know Columbus Day, but is that Rosh Hashanah? Is it?
Um, nope, Rosh Chana is. The fifth. No, that's Yom Kippur. Yom Kippur is the fifth. Rosh Hashana is the 26th of September. You're fine.
Okay, I know I'm running into a couple holes.
Yeah, let me ask you, if we're having a meeting on September 22nd, wouldn't your next meeting be on October 6th?
Second and fourth.
It's the second and fourth.
Oh, Thursday, okay, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So I think that's good, Peter. I I think that we should have at least a short meeting on this. On the 22nd so that we can keep it moving forward. So whatever's not, whatever we're still missing. Whatever questions we have, um, we can try to get more and more wrapped up before that next meeting.
Mm-hmm, and I think we should really shoot for the the 13th to 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 have a full. You know, I think that I think that's reasonable. I think it's reasonable for the planning board. I think it's reasonable for the developer to have that expectation. To have a, to to really make them to to have a full decision and to be able to close and to vote on this application.
I think that's something we can we can shoot for. I think we're. Close to to being there. You know, I think we just have to see it on paper. Okay, so I think as soon as we can get these things, and this is in the hands of all the planning board too. As soon as we can get the this text to Peter, we can start building this document and the better the document will be. So. I know all of our schedules are beyond full, but um. A few notes in, you know, would would go a long way. I mean, we can wait for. A few notes in, you know, would would go a long way, I mean, we can wait for. If you don't have the time, you can wait for Peter's first draft, and then get comments back to him about anything that you find unclear or incomplete.
I really like the idea of the applicant responding to the D R C documents, because if if I can. Personally, if I can get the applicant's kind of written response, agreed, done, 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 I can. Easily turn that into something for Peter, hey, can you add this to the decision, right, or whatever, so.
I'll try to get that done tomorrow.
He's gonna start work on it as soon as we uh, get off camera here.
I'm trying to think of other documents, Tricia, like that, is there anything else like that, that the, that we can get the applicant to kind of pre-fill?
I think we've given you everything, you've the traffic, stormwater, engineering, architecture, landscape architect. I think we sent you a major package a number of weeks ago.
Yeah, looking at my list, most of it is here, so um. But if we come up with something meanwhile, if you think of something tomorrow morning, you can definitely shoot that off to Peter and and make a request.
Thank you.
So, all right. Okay, on that note, I will entertain a motion to continue the um. Public hearing for one hundred Chestnut Street until September twenty second.
Second.
First, I need, no, we're gonna have a short meeting on the, we're gonna have you in a time slot for the twenty second. So I'm entertaining that motion, so I need a so moved or someone to repeat my motion.
You mean for September twenty second?
For September twenty second, isn't that right?
I can make, I'll make the motion to continue the chest, the one hundred Chestnut Street project hearing to September twenty.
Okay, then I know. Just gonna say, Marcella seconded, someone had seconded, so uh, roll call.
Deepa Wangi, die.
Anna Testmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine, Jersey card.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, so that is continued until September twenty second. All right, heavy lifting, but needed to be done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, all right, next on our agenda should be a relatively, oh, sorry, we need to continue a few things. Um, next on our agenda is the five oh one Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. I'm gonna summarize for Peter that I think they're going through some of the G C G things and. Going in front of Concom and other stuff, and so have asked for a continuance, fair enough, Peter?
Fair enough.
Okay, so um, I will, I will make sense, it's just a continuance, I will make a motion to. Um, continue the five oh one Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review until. When though? We can't put our ten in the twenty second.
Nope, that is, excuse me, that's gonna be continued out to the first meeting, October.
October thirteenth.
To the October thirteenth.
Okay, so October thirteenth, is there a second for that? All right, and a roll call vote.
Deepa Wangi, die.
Kevin, I think you're, I think you're voting, not me.
All right, Deepa, Marcelo. Who's next?
Kevin.
Kevin, aye.
Okay.
Jersey card.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, so that is continued until October thirteenth. Next, we have three hundred Elliott Street Site Plan Review Modification, this is the changes to one light pole. At the Bank of America on Elliott Street, they just need to provide some drawings, as we talked about last time, to make that more clear. Those drawings have not yet been received, so um, so we're continuing, so. I will make a motion to continue this when, to the thirteenth as well? All right, to continue the three hundred Elliott Street Site Plan Review Modification. To October thirteenth, is there a second? And a roll call vote.
Deepa Wangi, die.
Anna Testmanitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Jersey card.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, yay, okay, uh, item E, um, so this is. A new public hearing, um. Uh, Peter, does that mean you need to read this?
I am going to read this into the record, yep.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, in accordance with the provisions, the Ashland Scenic, uh, Ashland Scenic Road Bylaw, the Ashland Planning Board will hold the public hearing. September sixth, uh, excuse me, September eighth, two thousand twenty-two, at September fifteenth. By Zoom Conference, the petition found of Ashland to approve of the scenic road application for tree removal. The trees to be removed are in the right of way in our debt, the property questions are located at. Uh, three hundred and thirty-one Chestnut Street, nineteen Franklin Street, zero Main Street, excuse me. Says zero Main Street, Chestnut Street, crossing the Rose Day, I think that's a typo, um, and then. Uh, three ten, three hundred and ten Cedar Street. Three hundred and forty-two Cedar Street and two shady hollow path. Um, and they are all in the residential area district. Um, I am, um, I've been working with the Down DPW on this. Uh, and so this was a number of trees that had to be uh, removed. Um, and I, uh. I have a couple updates uh, for the planning board, I guess. Um, last week, I was actually out with the DPW on staff. Uh, and the trees at three ten Cedar Street and four twenty-two Streeter Street um, have recovered. And they are a little bit better and healthier than uh, first thought, uh, indoor inspected by the DPW. However, the trees that are uh, in most, that are. Seized and are dead at this point are um, at three eleven Chestnut Street. There are two pine trees right at that intersection that are not in good health.
There are four. Sorry, what was that address?
Uh, it's three, uh, three thirty-one Chestnut Street.
Okay, so that that one's bad?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I can pull up the street, I can pull up a street view of that one. Um, the homeowner at nineteen Franklin Street, they did, um, the homeowners actually did approach the town and reported. Of the, of the, the, the dead trees that were leaving, obviously, um, they thought they were hindrance. Um, upon inspection and measurement of the roadway layout on on Franklin Street. Um, our DPW, Roy Carrera, um, found that those trees were actually on town property. And they were deemed necessary to come down, um, those trees were, uh, again, they were dead trees. And then, uh, the one, the tree on Shady Hollow Path, um, at two Shady Hollow Path. It's a smaller tree, however, there was some significant ant uh, holes and some salt rot at the base of the tree. Um, and so therefore, um, it it it's not a healthy tree, it's not, uh, it's not gonna survive. Uh, too many more years, um, but it was deemed necessary to come down uh, at this point. So, um, I know this, it's it's ten fifteen, uh, we can continue this matter, I can tell you that none of these trees are in. Um, you know, are 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 dire need to be taken down tomorrow, because that would have been deemed an emergency. Um, but I can, uh, but but I continue to work with DPW, because there are a number of these trees. Along Ashland Scenic Roads that identify.
So at at this point, Peter, the only trees we're really looking at are three thirty-one Chestnut Street, nineteen Franklin Street. And two sh- shady hollow path.
That's correct.
And all of these trees are on town property.
That's correct, it's, they're in the road right away.
And all of them have been looked at by um, Tree Warden Roy Carr- Roy Carrera already.
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, what are, what's the, what's the proposal to remove and replace, or just to remove?
To remove, yeah.
Not to replace them anywhere else on the route?
At this point, no, DPW didn't want us, you know, could, you know, there's nothing to replace. Um, I would say. Nineteen Franklin Street, it's a, it's kind of an interest, it's 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 a fairly steep slope to replace, and and I think they would. You know, visiting the site, I would think that it would not be, um. It'd be, it'd be, it'd be tough.
Can't we replace somewhere else on the scenic route?
We could, we could have, that's the essence of the planning board. Um, you know, at three thirty-one Chestnut Street, I believe, we could have, there's the opportunity to replace them in the public right away.
Where does the money come from for tree replacement?
It just comes out of the DP, DPW doesn't really have a line on this, you know, and I think that's another, that's always a topic of discussion. Uh, is where does the money come from? Um, and there's really no good answer, right, um, you know, these. And I'm not the one that has the answer for it, you know, it's, it kind of falls into the DPW realm. However, the planning board is the uh, uh, just has that authority, has. The public hearing has to be held by the planning board on all scenic roads. Um, I did, uh, and I know we talked about replacement of trees and. And I talked to DPW on the side, and there was a bunch of replacements, tree up on Winter Street. And and, you know, we're in a drought and we can't hand water, and so the DPW is actually not planting any trees right now. Indoor any planters, because we don't have the ability to walk at this point, right? Um, and so, um. If you would like to continue, and and I can get a better answer about the the plantings and or replacement. From DPW within an email, I'm happy to do that.
I I think it would be.
I have, I have one quick comment.
Yep.
Um. I really like where Anna is going with this. Uh, I think we make a big point of asking all developers to plant trees and get that. I think we need to ask ourselves the same thing, I think we need to somehow find the right budget, but when the town has property and the trees. Uh, die or whatever, I think the town has to replace it, and ideally, not replace it with one, but with two trees for each one that takes down.
I think.
I, i- if I could, I think we need to think about it long term as well, because we're gonna be in drought conditions for some time, that's not gonna go away. So, uh, we're gonna need to have a broader conversation, right, about that? Maybe we need to start thinking about a tree ordinance as a community. Um, and creating a a budget for it, because we do have drought and and water issues coming our way, we're gonna have this continued issue.
Yeah, in terms of this project, in terms of this issue at hand, I think it's about, um. Though looking at the, the, the places where the trees get planted might not be the ones where they're located now, right? If these are in an area where the trees are dense to begin with, and that's the reason one of the trees didn't survive, we don't want to put one back right in the same.
No, it should be where it makes sense.
Yeah, so I mean, if Peter's offering to continue, then maybe, I mean, saying that maybe we can continue, these are only three locations. We can send that out for email, maybe people can get a drive, do a drive by and. Understand what these scenic roads really look like a little bit, um, it's, which is hard to.
Could we also get a written letter from the tree warden that specifies kind of. What the sickness is, what the cause of the sickness is, is it because it's a crowded area, is it drought, what is it? Could we get that kind of report, and then maybe recommendations from him or her as to where the replanting could be on the scenic route?
Happy to make a request um, from the tree warden, um. Just wanna note real quick, uh, I'm sorry, I think everyone knows this intersection, Chestnut Street to you. Um, this is Prospect Street going up towards Fruit Street. The true trees in question are these pine trees. Right here, obviously, there are, it's on a major salt route, if, you know, regarding, um. Regarding plowing, um, and they're on town owned property. Uh, and so it doesn't make sense to repair from this area and this bed, maybe not. But I just want to note that those are the two trees on um, on Chestnut Street that we spoke of, we're speaking of.
I mean, I, you know, I'm not an, I don't know much about how this works, and so I I think it would be really helpful for me. Uh, as a planning board member to understand from the tree warden, are there planning elements we should be thinking about that caused the death of these trees, is it? You know, are we crowding the tree, and somehow, what what's happening that could be something we can learn from? But also, where could we replant it that makes sense on the scenic route, ideally, somewhere else on the scenic route?
I think it's probably important to know, and and I might be speaking out of turn, that Roy Carrera, though he's the tree warden. I don't think he's an arborist, and so. I'm not sure, maybe he would be able to provide his suspicions, but maybe not, is that accurate, Peter?
You know, Roy Carrera is a very talented man. If you know Roy is a great guy, uh, and so, I, you know, I think I can work with Roy to put something together. Uh, and and obviously, Roy's worked in DPW for well over twenty years, and so taking care of trees. You know, as a tree warden, as a, as a, I would say, as a moon. As a, on the, on the, on the front end, or boots on the ground guy to the town forest, so. I can talk to Roy, and I'm sure he has his suspicions, and I think his suspicions are probably in the correct spots. Uh, and so with that, I can, I can reach out and work with Roy a little bit more, um, on this, I think, the planning board, I think, uh. And then just kind of come back to this at a later date.
That's.
I think that, I think that's great, and it's.
Put Roy on the spot?
No.
I think it's a great precedent, because unfortunately, I think we're gonna have more of this coming our way. Um, with continued droughts and climate conditions, so I think it's healthy for us to get into a pattern where we put these things in writing. We have recommendations for replanting, we can make good informed decisions.
And I'll tell you right now, if you drive around town, you're gonna see trees. And if you drive the back roads, you know, and other communities, um, there's dead trees everywhere on scenic roads, and and so I think. It's, I agree, it's a compounded issue, and it's always, in in working in town staff, you're always, you're always chasing it, right? And to be, to be proactive in this nature is very difficult, because, um. Things are always happening, and 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 trees are sometimes are at the bottom of it.
Well, it, I mean, it underscores for me the importance of those questions when we have a new project, a new development.
Mm-hmm.
I'm thinking of one across from some public spaces where we can, we can in fact ask those questions of developers. Who have an interest economically in green space, because it looks, makes their property look good.
Hundred percent.
So are there projects nearby that we need to be aware of for those three properties? That could be impacted by that?
No, I think Franklin Streets, you know, fairly, you know, well, you know, Franklin Streets are fairly, um.
Residential?
Yeah, low dense residential area.
Nothing within walking distance, no projects proposed?
No, I think that's kinda.
Yeah.
You know, nothing to, nothing really up there, and obviously, Chestnut Street there, and that's really mine, so.
Is the Chestnut Street project, how far is that from one hundred Chestnut?
Um, yeah, kind of far.
Not super, he could walk down the hill if she. We're in a walk mood, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's not related to this.
Not right there, right?
You know, I mean.
I think we're in, I think we're in a good place with a hundred Chestnut, so I think we should just kind of.
No, just curious, I was curious, not really opining, just curious.
Yeah.
It's the kind of things we need to think about, not throw, not expanding the the pot.
Yeah, you're at least, you're at least three hundred yards away.
Since it's a public hearing and it's getting late, I am going to allow public comment, but I have to ask you to keep it really to the point.
It is to the point, there is an exception in, um, the watering, um. Bylaws, which got us a supplemental attachment to the M W R A, I know, because I was on city. Uh, two seventy dash ten dash A. Municipal projects for the beautification of ashland or other projects within the public right of way required by zoning. So that would apply to street trees on scenic roads, certainly, and probably street trees in general. Street trees absolutely reduce the heat island effect, they're great for all kinds of stormwater. Um, sequestering, breeding a beautiful environment, so I'm definitely. Um, commend this idea about planning. Or keeping street trees, and they can get water, and we can also use tree bags to water them, so. That's the most sort of uh, economical, friendly. Uh, conservation minded way to water trees when they're getting installed, that's what they use in all the. Everywhere you see trees getting installed, they're using tree bags. So, thank you, that was my.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
I I don't know much about that, Peter, I don't know if the tree warden could comment on it, so we can better understand what that is.
A tree, a tree bag?
Bag?
Oh, well, we can, I don't think we need to get into it.
Yeah, not right now.
Yes, just Google it.
Well, now, when you plant, you see new trees.
I don't know if you.
It's the green bag around the bottom, it just holds the water, so it continuously waters the tree.
Okay, well, I mean, we haven't done that internationally, I haven't seen it, so.
Well, and in any case, and in any case, we probably still wouldn't plant them during a drought, you'd probably still wait, because why use water on that during a drought? Wait, wait a few months, right? So, um, all right, so we will look to. Continue that until when?
I would, I would say October eighth.
All right, I will make a motion to continue the scenic road application, oh, sorry, scenic, this. It's kind of a strange title, I will make a motion. It's kind of a strange title. I will make a motion to continue the scenic road application. Until October thirteenth.
Second.
And a roll call vote?
Going to die.
Anna Tespinitsky, aye.
Masravana, aye.
Yeah. And Tricia Kendall, aye. Okay, so. Uh, we're at the end of all the other stuff on the agenda, um. Peter, in this first session, I think those topics would all be yours. Is there anything critical that we need to go through tonight?
I just wanted to note that the MBTA communities, they did issue some final, uh, final, uh, final guidelines. Um, I had my first, uh. Seminar about today. Obviously every town committee, e- every town is still getting through the process. And so hopefully all the better updates in a couple of weeks on that, uh, then we'll kind of go from there.
Okay. Everything else is still just on hold. Scenic roads outreach.
Scenic roads outreach is on hold. Ashland zoning bylaw, public information meeting, the application, um. Did everyone get Lisa Mead's email concerning that?
No, about that?
Yeah, about that topic. It came a couple of months ago, a month ago. I think we've skipped over it the last couple of meetings. Um, it pretty much states that our, our bylaw, and I'll resend the app, I'll resend the email for everybody. Our bylaw. She believes that this section under nine point four point three point five with the public needed information. It's truly interpreted as the public hearing for a site plan approval.
Oh. So something we're already incorporating?
We're already incorporating it. We're already doing it, um. And, uh.
Yeah, I don't remember seeing that. So if you can resend it, I could have missed it.
I'll resend it to everybody, um. But what it came down to is, I, obviously after we talked about it, I talked about it with Lisa. This is kind of brave, you know, it's going to get her to look at it. And her and I reviewed the bylaw of site plan approval. And in no instance in site plan approval do they talk about a public hearing, right? Incorporating section forty A. And so she believes that that meeting, the public informational meeting. Is truly the, um, public hearing for a site plan approval process. It's just in a different language. And so. Uh, that's probably something we should probably correct in the bylaws. Um, at annual town meeting, but I will resend that email out just so everybody has that. Um, does everyone remember that entire, that long conversation that we had?
I remember the conversation. I remember any letter from Lisa Mead, so.
All right.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll resend that tomorrow and I'll follow up with everybody.
That sounds good.
Um, and then the economic impact tool, um, we did receive the updated economic impact tool from the applicant. Of ten to fifty Main Street, obviously his engine, his, um. Economic, economic consultant was the one that was working for the town. Um, so we have that model. Um, how do we use that? We have, well, we can continue trying to use that to mold it to what we want. Um, obviously it's been a very busy time, so we haven't been able to touch upon that topic.
Okay. Yeah, I think you and Emma were going to try to review it, understand it with him, understand the changes, and then we would have some kind of. Whether on a retreat or in a regular meeting, have some kind of presentation to understand it a little bit better.
Mm-hmm. And I did mention to Craig Seymour. That it may make sense to give him twenty minutes at an upcoming planning board meeting. For him to walk through the tools with the planning board to show everybody how it kind of, it, it works.
Okay.
And then go from there. And if everyone thinks that's appropriate, I can make that request.
Yeah, whenever it kind of fits in to the agenda.
Okay.
But figure out when we have a little empty space.
Yep.
Okay, number six, um. Reports from board members and town planner. There's a little confusion on this. I, I got an email from, oh, Margie who's on there. Um, wanting to know if the sustainability committee was expected to present. But for all of our reference, this is just a placeholder when it says reports. These are simply reports by us planning board members talking to each other. About committees that we are on and are reporting back information. So. If something's under this section, it never implies that there's outs, outside groups coming in. If that happens, it would be taken out of this section and put in into a regular agenda item. So. This is us talking to ourselves. Basically, anything from item five, planning topics down is us talking to ourselves, um. For better or for worse. Um, so that said, Anna, do you have a report about sustainability committee or?
Um, uh, not at this time, other than I think the sustainability committee is working on. Uh, taking a position real regarding a potential tree bylaw. Um, so when they do, I may have a report.
Okay.
And what our role as a planning board might be, I, I think at that point we should discuss once we have some more. Um, from them.
Yeah, I definitely think it'll be a point where we want to meet with sustainability again and talk to them about the document Margie sent, which we're obviously already using. And the checklist that, um, I'm sure will be coming at some point as well.
So we want to have a, do we want to have that on the next agenda to, to bring them in to discuss that checklist? And.
I, I think I'm waiting until the checklist is complete and I'm not going to push them on that and then we can talk about it.
Okay.
So. Um, design review committee, uh. 伸到Kathy, who is on the call, um. And just trying to set up a time where maybe chair and vice chair of each committee can get together with. Peter and Emma and talk more about that relationship, but so far that hasn't, hasn't happened. So we'll. Keep trying to, uh, to move that forward. Comprehensive plan, Anna, that's back to you.
As, from what I recall, we're having a meeting with. The select board next Wednesday.
Wednesday night.
At seven fifteen, or what time is their meeting? Not seven fifteen.
Typically start at seven o'clock.
They do. They're not weird like we are. Um, yeah.
I wanted to choose that.
I say seven fourteen is what we should do. Um, so. I, you know, I'm, I am planning to be there. I'm hope, I'm hoping the rest of the board can as well. I think we just need a majority there if that, that's helpful so that we can. Review their, their input to our input, to Michael's input to our. Um.
So I don't think they, we don't, obviously they don't have that agenda set yet. I don't, I don't think so. We don't have a time. I think we'll get, when we get an approximate time, Peter can put it out there. I'm planning to be there. Anna's planning to be there. It'd be good if we have. One more, um, if someone can join us, then we could make a little bit more decisive move forward, but.
Are we, are, are we posting it as a public meeting for ourselves as well? So that we do have majority, we can.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. If everyone wants to come, then everyone is welcome to come.
It will be posted as a public hearing and joint public meeting with the select board. Typically the select board. Will post the meeting and obviously we'll use their Zoom link. So once that public meeting agenda is posted, I'll send it out to everybody. So we're going to be using the Zoom link or their agenda. Um, we have our own Zoom link. They have their own Zoom link. Goes back two years when everyone was jumping around on different nights, um, and, and getting Zoomed on.
But it is in person, right?
They're back in person.
They're back in person, yes. What we can, yes, excuse me. You're right. Yeah.
I think I'm going to show up in person probably, um.
Yep, I was planning to as well, but. If I forget, then I'll just show up online.
I'll follow up with everybody. I'll follow up with Susan. We'll be tomorrow when the select board's up.
Okay.
Great.
Um. Inclusionary zoning, just, uh, so everyone knows we are not pursuing that for the fall, given my schedule this summer, um, and. Just other loads people have had. It was just too much to take on, um. So we are looking for that to, um, go to spring where we can get into everything in more depth. So. That's, that's where that is. Um. CPC, there's nothing really to report there, um, though I do continue to be surprised at how few applications CPC gets. To use their money, right? But there's, don't seem to be very many applications to. Obviously it has to be certain categories, um. Maybe somewhere down the road, we can talk more about that, but there's just, they just very, don't seem to get a lot of applications for the free money. So, still learning about that, but that's where I'm sitting on it. Um. Next is something should be added to the agenda is other for any other reports and. Um, I know that Kate would like to talk a little bit about. Tri- trails. It's not the right name.
Uh, the Upper Charles Trail Committee, yes, I just. Wanted to introduce the subject that I think the planning board needs to be. Familiar with proposed routes. So when projects come for us, we make sure that that doesn't slip through. Um, in a discussion, I think in the past it may have. Um, so that was introducing the topic and I think probably at some point the planning board would want to see. If the truck committee would come. I believe they would come. And I guess, I think.
So you mean like understanding where the proposed trails are or the proposed entries? Is that what you mean?
Yes. Yeah, I think. I think it'd be great to see, yeah.
I think it's something, uh. Can we also connect that to complete streets, Peter, so that we can, I mean, to me, those are interconnected.
I think they're actually kind of different, um. Complete streets is, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Peter, but complete streets is an actual program. Like I was on the complete streets committee once.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where we really looked at like walking routes to school, you know, things like that where trails is kind of off, off-roading in a way. So I, I think they're a little bit different, but, um. But we should ob- obviously pay attention to.
Yeah, I mean, I only compare them as far as like they're like. Involve humans walking around.
Yeah, I just don't think, I don't think the trails committee has anything to do with complete streets, I guess.
Yep, so.
Trails committee, both pedestrian access through town. Two separate things, obviously, the trail committee, which would be the, the, um. Charge of Trail Committee. The expansion of that trail, complete streets, that program moves to DPW and, um, and that process. And so, and, and that kind of comes from that. That goes through a different program, which is through more state funding, state allocation. As Tricia says, safe routes to school, sidewalk, safe crossings, handicap, oh, excuse me, accessible ramps. Um, all those items, um, um. Or, or, or fall more into the complete streets category.
But in any case, I think that's a good idea, Kate, and I think, uh, just selfishly, people are probably wondering where that, what they're thinking about, where those. Things are going and it'd be good to, it would be good for all of us to understand. So, um. Again, maybe you can look, you know, work with me and Peter, let's find a gap and see if they would be. I mean, maybe they have a timeframe where they think it would be most useful to talk to us. You know, maybe you could reach out and, and find that too, so.
And I did have another, um, related to that, that. Well, related to other business, I guess, other reports, um, that I think that the board should probably consider. Or I would like to see us consider having that conversation with the superintendent about schools. I think it's just best to be. Transparent about information. I, I, I know there's sort of. Limits about that with us, but it's certainly in the wildwood, for example, to evaluate the impacts on schools. And it's a general consideration. So I feel like at least. Not ignoring that under our provision would be helpful.
Yeah, no, that's why I had reached out to Jim about some of those questions, um. Um, yeah, to, to get, you know, for him to get back to us. And I was pleasantly surprised that he. Um, you know, offered to come in and, and talk about some of those things. I mean, not that he. Doesn't come in on other, other issues. I think he was in on the Mendez school, maybe a meeting or two. Um, so, um, again, we should find a slot to just have him talk to us about schools. Um, a little bit so we, we know those impacts. You know, that they have.
It might be a good thing to partner up with the. Economic tool meeting, Peter, that you have in mind. To me, these are kind of related because they're educate, educating the board. To our role, big picture.
Okay.
Yeah, different education items. I think that's, I think that's, uh, right. Even the trails is like that. It's kind of education.
Yeah.
So. Okay, uh, anything else, Kate?
You.
Okay. All right, administrative matters. Peter, do we have anything you've actually received? I know there's all kinds of talk going around about Shaw's, but we have not actually received anything about that.
Received anything on that item. The only administrative matters I do want to note is that next. Obviously the company has a plan meeting with the select board next Wednesday night. And then also I'm going to confirm, I'm not confirmed with the applicant for ten to sixty Main Street. Uh, we're going to have a site visit next Thursday night at five o'clock. Um, obviously I think we should, I'm going to say park in the town hall parking lot. We can meet in the corner spot around, um, and then cross the street over to five oh one, excuse me. Ten to fifty, ten to sixty Main Street. And so the applicant will be, uh, the owner, Mr. Gordon, I think is going to join us. And, uh, Scott Richardson, the architect, will join us. Obviously the designer will be invited, um, and we'll email them out. I'm sorry, there was no due to poll, just correcting everyone's input. I just. Literally looked on the calendar and checked off days which don't work and went from there and it's really selected the only day that worked. Um, before the meeting for the second.
Okay, yep, sounds good. Um. Looking forward to that, actually. I think also just to, to go back a minute to Shaw's, I don't want to get into a deep discussion tonight because it's just late and we don't have time.
And I'm also, I'm also direct to butter, Tricia.
Okay.
So.
It, it's mostly about, it's mostly just about information, like I think. This could be this or any project. It's about, um. I think residents feeling that somehow the planning board has information about this when really. This or other projects before they actually even appear before the planning board, right? We don't have any. There's been no meeting about it. There's been no anything. Um, and I wonder, Peter, how do you kind of get that information out there? You know, I, I'm only hearing from the buzz around town that there was. Letters that went out and stuff, but otherwise, you know, I'm not privy to this information and I assume. Others aren't either besides what you hear around town because it's not before the planning board, right?
Yes, it's not before the planning board and, and I think I can just, there was a, there was letters sent out to invite, i- i- is. Concerning a community meeting, which was organized by the owner. Of the Shaw's Plaza and it had nothing to do with, it was not under the purview and or. Organization of the town of Ashland.
I guess my thought is like, how do we get that information out there? Because I think it, it, I think it's out there somehow. It originates with us when. I'm just a resident in this. I've, you know.
I don't know.
I, I think at one point during one of our retreats, we talked about social media presence, Tricia, and maybe we should revisit that. Maybe we. Maybe at some point we need to have another retreat and talk about, and talk about. Public communication, right? Um. Because we keep doing it. We keep bringing it up at retreats. We keep talking about social media. We haven't done it. I, I think we need to revisit that and figure out a way to publicly make those. Educational comments, whether it's about scenic routes or. How we find out about projects or processed or public comment, whatever it is we're doing.
Yeah, that's, it's just, I think, yeah, just kind of figuring out that what that process is. That was, that was kind of my.
Yeah, we keep coming back to this. I feel like every major project that comes into town. We're confronted with this exact same issue, which it's almost like a PR issue for our board. And, and we need to put PR on our agenda. It doesn't really, we don't even need a, honestly, we don't even need a retreat for this. We should include this on our agenda and have a discussion about. Do we want a social media presence? Who is going to draft those educational announcements? How are we going to make sure as a board moving forward that the rumor mill stops relative to the process? Or that we're more transparent about whatever it is that we're doing on a process.
But, 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 I mean, uh, uh, at the same time being realistic. Because we, we're not, our, our charter is not to, to control rumors. Uh, I think we're a technical board that has some judgment on things and we try to follow and apply the bylaws. Uh, we, we cannot do it all. We've got to be realistic about communication. We can, we can make some communication. Worse, perhaps. I mean, we're never going to stop the rumors about things.
True. It's true.
It's about bal, it's about balance and capacity, which are always the same issues we discuss at every retreat. Or, I don't know, I, I think we just need to, we keep coming back to this in a repeated fashion. I've seen it in my time on the board. Um, and I think we need to kind of put a bow on it and make some decisions. Rather than coming back to it over and over again.
I think we've made some headway, but, but yeah, we haven't gone the whole way. And so, I guess in, in terms of a retreat, thinking about, you know, revisiting some of these type of things. Obviously, not September, but I was trying to maybe look in October, November, that maybe we can have a retreat in, in there somewhere.
Yeah, I would, I, October is great. You know, I think November, we start to get into those holidays.
Yeah, before we get into holiday season, and just one of our evening, you know, in-person couple hours. Obviously, we get through a tiny little part of what we'd like to get through, but at least.
Yeah.
Make some headway.
I'm sure the comprehensive plan will be a big chunk of it, um, but I feel like this issue, communicating with the public keeps coming back.
Okay. All right. We're gonna wait on topics for future meetings, because we're actually already talking about that. Have a list of things we need to talk about in future meetings. So, minutes review, can we go through those quickly? So, we keep up, we have them from the July fourteenth and with the two July meetings, I guess.
I reviewed them and I have no comments.
The only one, minor one that I had, this was probably the July fourteenth one where we have the scenic road outreach. We are referring to the sustainability director in one line, and the next paragraph talks about sustainability program manager. So, um, we probably want to clarify, is she a sustainability director or a program manager?
Jesus, I'll fix that one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I see, yep.
Oh, I see, I got you.
What is, what is her proper title? Sustainability Coordinator?
I hope I can hire, I hired.
Wait, so she's sustainability coordinator?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so that's not even there here, so.
She replaced Frank Nercashian, who left back, actually about a year ago, Frank left. I'll make that change. I'll take care of it.
Um, another minor one, I think it was on, I don't know if the order of voting matters. Um, I think it was the twenty eighth where Marcelo seconds it, and he's the first one on the voting order. So, I don't know for record if it matters at all. But, um, this one was. The forty.
What line is this?
Um, I did not download it, so I may not be able to tell you the order. So, it is in the same, uh, the same meeting minutes. The forty Summer Street Special Permit.
Oh, okay, I got you.
The first topic, so I don't know if it matters at all, but.
Okay.
Name seems to appear twice there.
I'll take care of that.
Thanks.
Does anyone else have any other changes in those meeting minutes? Also, it's going to read through. Okay, then. I will entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes. Can we do them both at one time, Peter? We can, I think, from July fourteenth and July twenty eighth as amended.
I'll make the motion as stated.
And the second? Okay, a roll call vote.
Keep going, good eye.
Anna Tuskmanitsky, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye, so. That is five zero zero.
Do we need, do we need Kevin to vote as well? Because one of them abstained from the five oh one pond. Does that matter?
Kevin, do you approve or?
Kevin McLean, aye.
All right, excellent. Okay, and is there anything else?
I'll just, go ahead, Anna, go ahead then.
I was gonna say, I noticed that the minutes are a little cleaner than normal, so whoever's doing them, good job.
I don't know if, yeah, I mean, I feel like they're getting to, I mean, I do review them before they go out, but I feel like they've been getting to me cleaner, so I don't know if them stepping in and then they're coming to me.
I remember I was stepping in, we're trying to take.
I just wanted to, whoever's doing it, whoever's doing it, they're getting better, I think.
Yeah. I appreciate, that's a big load, so. Um, Deepa?
Um, the only thing, FYI, next Wednesday and the walkthrough, I'm not gonna be able to make it. Both the Wednesday night meeting and the Thursday walkthrough.
Okay, and Anna, you said you might be a little late.
I will, I, I, I have a family doctor's appointment for my daughter at four fifteen in Sudbury. So, the walkthrough, I will be late. I'll try to get as soon as I can.
We might still be outside, so.
I'll text, I'll text Peter, so hopefully I'll find you guys.
Yeah, just text me. I'll let you know if we're outside or if anybody wants to go inside, whatever, wherever we go, we'll, we'll take it from there.
Sounds good.
We're targeting maybe the week of October tenth. They're gonna induce her.
Oh.
Weeks early, so that's like the latest we'll go, but hopefully that'll be the week. So, I have a pretty good idea of when it's gonna be, but just there may be a meeting I need to miss.
That's, that's a wonderful reason, so.
All right. Sounds good.
Collecting stuff around the house for you, Kevin.
Yeah. Got funny already. Tomorrow, so.
It just comes all at once. All right.
All right, well, I assume I'll see most of you at least at one of the, one of the events next week. So, um, that said, I will make a motion to adjourn at ten fifty-four.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote.
Keep going, good eye.
Anna Tuskmanitsky, aye.
Kevin?
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. That is six zero zero. We are done. Thanks, everybody.
Have a great night.